All right, welcome everybody to our May 10th, 2022 Eagle City Council meeting. We can get a roll call, please.
Ginnisberger, here. Pike, Bond.
President.
Russell, here. Do we have a forum?
And for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, does anybody have any additions, deletions, or modifications to the agenda?
Uh.
Nope.
All right, seeing none. Item five, the presentation, Valley Regional Transit Budget Discussion. Valley Regional Transit here? Okay, then we will move on to reports. Council members, any reports?
None.
None? Good.
I have an update on discussions with Eagle Senior Center and Valley Regional Transit. Been working with both entities to arrive at the best solution for the VRT fund reimbursement. They've been having issues between the Senior Center and VRT in calculating the reimbursement correctly, so, and there is some new software coming late this summer, which should alleviate some of those issues. And then I'm also in the process of reviewing the Senior Center's budget and an audit of revenue and expenses, working with the Senior Center manager and staff to work through this, and hopefully we can identify and evaluate funding sources and possibly make some changes so that they can be more self-sufficient.
Okay.
Okay.
Excellent. Councilman Bond? Okay, all right, any staff members? Yep?
I just wanted to make everybody aware that Holly Sensitz in the clerk's office, our deputy clerk, got her Idaho certification from the ICC TFA, which is the Idaho City Clerk Treasurers and Financial Officers Association. Anyway, she just got certified, and she's been working on that. She's only been a deputy clerk for a couple of years, so that's continuing education and through classes put on through BSU and things like that. So anyway, I just wanted to do a shout out to her for that.
Excellent.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
I don't know about you guys, I'm having a hard time hearing people down on that side. I think these speakers are completely off.
What?
Yeah. Yeah, there's something different, though. Maybe John could look at that.
No, good.
I'm sorry.
They can't hear us either, they said.
Okay.
Testing.
Test.
You just heard Holly is certified?
You actually have four certified clerks. Three of them are internationally certified. All four of us are certified through the state of Idaho, and Holly's going to be working on her international certification as well, so.
Yeah.
We have IT looking into the issue, so.
Mr. Mayor, test for me. I can, I can, they can hear now, thanks.
Okay, we'll keep going and if we need to do something, but. Attorney, any reports from you? No? Okay. We want item seven, public comment one. The Eagle City Council is taking both in-person and remote public comment via WebEx. Meeting login instructions are posted on the website. If you just want to watch the meeting without giving comment, please watch the live stream at the website. This time is reserved for the public to address their elected officials regarding concerns or comments they would like to provide to the city council regarding subjects not on the agenda. At times, the city council may seek comments, opinions regarding specific city matters during this allotted time. This is not the time slot to give formal testimony on a public hearing matter, land use application, or comment on a pending application or proposal. Out of the courtesy of those who wish to speak, the city council requests each speaker limit their comments to three minutes. Is there anyone that would like to public comment? No? All right, then we will move on to consent agenda. All consent agenda items are considered to be action items. Consent agenda items are considered to be routine and are acted on with one motion. There will be no separate discussion on these items unless the mayor, city council member, member of city staff, or a citizen requests an item removed from the consent agenda for discussion. Items removed from the consent agenda will be placed on the regular agenda in a sequence determined by the city council. Any item on the consent agenda which contains written conditions of approval from the City of Eagle City Staff, Planning and Zoning Commission, or Design Review Board shall be adopted as part of the city council consent agenda approval motion unless specifically stated otherwise. Any motions or removals? Discussion?
There's nothing pulled, Mr. Mayor, for sure. I'll go ahead and move that we approve consent agenda items eight A through T.
All right, there's a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Move to second, any discussion? Roll call?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, we have no unfinished business, so we'll move on to item 10. All public hearing items are considered action items. Public hearing will not begin prior to 6:00 PM. So actually, we have 25 minutes that we have to do something, so. What's that? Oh, did VRT show up? Oh, okay, then we'll go ahead and hear from them. So we'll get back to item five, under Presentations, Valley Regional Transit Budget Discussion.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
Do we have to redo the agenda?
No.
Okay, just wanted to make sure, thanks.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Pleased to be here. Stephen Hunt, Development Director, Valley Regional Transit. Acknowledge that I was late today, apologize for that. Tried a different way of getting here, which was not faster.
It wasn't the bus, was it? Sorry, she said, she said to do that.
Continue that joke, if it was, I wouldn't be here yet, so. But we want to talk about actually what transit, what the transit future for Eagle could be, and we're excited about the opportunity. We also wanted to discuss the FY23 funding discussion for next year. So to begin, just wanted to get a little bit of background as to what the plans for transit in Eagle have been and are. So usually I start with a slide somewhat like this, and we recognize that the City of Eagle really is at crossroads, both figuratively and, and real, in reality, sitting on the corner of State Street and Eagle Road. There are travel patterns that continue farther to the east into downtown Boise, as well as heading south into Meridian. When we have developed our longer-range transportation plans, we look at extent, at connecting in both of those directions, so from Highway 44 and then continuing south to Meridian, and then also continuing east into downtown Boise. And the City of Eagle sits right at that crossroads and provides opportunities for residents to travel in either direction, as well as people farther up and down the corridor to go in those different directions. The long-range plan that we have for the City of Eagle recognizes that and provides service in both of those directions. It also focuses efforts on the State Street corridor, as well as a few residential corridors to just parallel State Street to the north, as well as connecting into West Boise. Those, those plans have been recognized in Valley Connect 2.0, as well as in communities in Motion 2050. So I just want to always come back to kind of what, as a region, the long-term vision is for, for service in Eagle. That's also recognized in development plans, like the State Street transportation, or transit-oriented development study, which incorporated input from each of the different jurisdictions along the State Street corridor, whether that be Garden City, the City of Eagle, Boise, even, and how development along that corridor could support potential transit services. And this study identified four different Tier One areas, including the corner, or the intersection of State Street and Old Horseshoe Ben Road. The development that is envisioned for that location, which is right where the three cities, City of Boise, Garden City, and Eagle touch, is higher, higher intensity use that could be supported by frequent fixed route service. Then most recently, the, in support, again, of all of those jurisdictions along the corridor, including the City of Eagle, we applied for a RACE grant, which is an opportunity for us to bring additional federal funds to the, to the region in order to both build infrastructure and expand transit services. Looked at building out developing plans at the State and Bogart intersection. I recognize this is not in Eagle, but just wanted to point out that there are existing efforts to extend that service farther from the east towards, towards the City of Eagle, and just an example of the coordination that's going on among the different jurisdictions. All to say, we know long-term that we have a long ways to go with the transit service in, in the city, and we're working with all of our partners to, to realize that. I wanted to speak briefly to current ridership trends, and then get into the, the proposals we have for service in FY23 and the funding request for consideration. So, as you know, the ridership, transit ridership since COVID has been, has been really challenging. We saw a really strong decline, sharp decline in ridership at the beginning of COVID. We hit the bottom roughly in the, in the first quarter of 20, well, sorry. We hit our lowest monthly ridership, actually, in February of 2021, and began to see year-over-year improvements in the first quarter of '22, although this still shows a decline when we compared the first quarter of '22 to the full first quarter of '21, because ridership in October was off. But we started to see that creep up in November, and then in December, and then you can see in quarter two of '22, we're seeing year-over-year growth. So we feel like we've hit the bottom, we're starting to see some, some growth come out of that, which, which makes us encouraged about some of the improvements that we're identifying in other parts of the region, including in the City of Eagle, which we'll talk about next. What's on the slide here is, is both system-wide ridership, as well as the ridership that's focused on Ada County, and then also specifically to State Street. In, in each of those areas, we're seeing growth over where we were in 2021, so positive signs. As we look now for the FY23 service proposal and funding request, we, I've been here a couple of times, sharing with a couple of different concepts, looking at bringing on-demand service to the City of Eagle, how can we best serve the residents today, especially those with the highest, highest needs. So when, when I was last here, we talked about a couple of different approaches to on-demand service. We've continued those conversations with the Eagle Senior, Senior Center, and leveraging their resources would be the most economical way to bring on-demand service to the general population. The, the idea, the proposal, is that we, it would operate within the current Eagle Senior Center service area, which is the blue area shown here, with connections to a number of, of higher, not higher density, but higher traction locations outside that, outside that service area, including St. Luke's in Meridian, off of Eagle Road, the Village in Meridian, the state of Idaho, Chindon Campus, which is the old HP campus, a number of employment centers out there, and then connecting to the, the transit service also at Garry and Bunch. We do have service at the Idaho State Campus, so if there's, if there are Eagle residents that are trying to connect farther into West Boise, they could transfer to, to other services there, or at Garry and Bunch. The service would actually be operated Monday through Saturday, so providing all day during the work week, as well as on the weekend, 8:00 AM to 6:00 PM, again, open to the general public. And services would be commingled with, with the Senior Center services, which would be the most economical way for us to provide that service to the, the residents of Eagle. The cost for the service, when we, we were looking at how to size this, we identified about one and a half additional FTE that would be needed to provide the additional capacity to, to accommodate the general public on the Senior Center services, the additional fuel that would be required, totals about $93,000 for the, for 12 months, for fiscal year. So this would be $93,000 to provide on-demand service Monday through Saturday, 8:00 AM to 6:00 PM, open to the general public, operating within the, the existing service area of the Eagle Senior Center, with connections to the broader community at Garry and Bunch, state, and the state of Idaho campus on Chindon, as well as Village of Meridian and St. Luke's Meridian. So we're excited about providing this, this recommendation. By way of, of comparison, this is roughly the same cost that was supporting the fixed route connection into, which came down State Street, did the turnaround to Valentine, that was seven trips a day. And while we know, know that the, in the long-term fixed route service with connections to farther, farther west would provide an important connection, this increases the accessibility of the riding, of the traveling public, would, I think, target the, the audience that we've been concerned with most directly, and makes things available on the weekend, which is something else that we hadn't been able to provide with the previous offer, offerings. So we've been continuing our conversations with the Eagle Senior Center to, to confirm with them that this direction is compatible with their vision, and that they would be able to, to meet this. It's my understanding that one of the advantages of, of extending the service until Saturday is that it also helps provide more service to the Senior Center and their operations on the weekend. So there's a symbiotic relationship here for us offering those services available to the general public, as well as continuing to better serve the, the senior population. So it doesn't change anything in terms of how the Senior Center operates, it would just open up the doors to the general public to be able to travel within the city of, within this service area and those connections to the broader community. Before I go on to the rest of the funding request, I thought I'd stop here and ask any questions about this service proposal.
Mr. Mayor? Councilman Bond?
Okay, I'll look at, so the clarification is, so the service area is only, you're basically picked up within that area, you're not picked up and dropped off within that area as well, right?
So you can, Mr. Mayor, you can travel within that area, or to one of those four locations that are outside the, outside the service area. So if you were traveling, say, from Meridian out to the T Sheets, not T Sheets, Inuit, or, or any of the, the theater there along Eagle, you could go to those locations, you could go to places along the State Street, or, or within the service area, or connect at Garry and Bunch, state of Idaho, the Village, or St. Luke's.
Mr. Mayor, follow up. So basically, you would get on-demand services to those locations, in which case, then from that location, you'd have to take commuter ride or something, and there's no stops in between, it's just to that location?
To those hubs, yeah, outside the service area. That's the way this is designed, yeah.
Right, okay, thanks.
Okay.
All right.
Perfect. So with that in mind, adding in the, the typical funding request for, by way of background, there are a couple of different line items that, that Valley Regional Transit Funding Request comes in. One is a general assessment, which looks at the regional shared population that each funding jurisdiction has. If there's specific ser, so when I say service assessment, that's related to like the fixed route service. This service assessment, or this assessment comes under the special assessment as an on-demand service, similar to the contribution that we also make to, to the Senior Center. So there would be two special assessments in this year's request totaling the 120,000, 121,000 for FY23. We provide these cost estimates at this point in the year to help each of our funding jurisdiction, funding partners' budget for, for service. We'll continue to refine this budget along with all of our other funding partners' budgets through the completion of our budget, which is in October. But we, we know that we need to be providing these numbers early on to our funding partners. We try and start with the worst-case scenario. Last year at this time, I think we were at, it was 112,000 was the original request. We came at the end to, a not-to-exceed amount of 115,000 for FY22. Similar sets of, of requests among the general assessment, service assessment, et cetera. And we would, are planning on following this up with, with a formal letter that spells out this in more detail to staff, but wanted to come and present this request to you all today and ask if you have any questions.
Okay. Any other questions?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, if I may. First of all, thanks for giving us the update, but as we stated, like, I think even last year, that the need for our on-demand service and curb-to-curb service is really what we're in need of in the demographics for our community, especially for the Senior Center. And Councilwoman Russell and I are working, obviously, as liaisons for the, for you and the Senior Center, so we're coming up with trying to find solutions within ourselves to make sure that we're providing the right service for the right economic numbers, especially for our seniors, because our seniors tend to have more of a fixed income approach in, in their, their daily budgets. But Councilman Bond just alluded to the same thing that I was going to talk about, was the point A to point B, getting, getting our seniors down to even St. Luke's, which is a high probability of need for medical, you know, treatments and visits and stuff. I'm not really sure of the Garry and Bunch section. I guess that's just a progressive way of getting down into Boise, that's the next logical stop. But yeah, I'm, I'm kind of looking at the service area, but our service area actually is, it's not, it's not a geographic area, it's really a necessity-based location, so maybe we need to have another discussion, too, a little bit more in detail about how do we solve that problematic issue with getting our customers really to the points that they need to, our, our citizens, your customers, to the points where they really need the services. And of course, the thing I'll allude to, Mr. Mayor, further, is that the point where the whole mass transit thing, it, it works if there's a unified front, 44 all the way, probably from Boise all the way up to 84 into Middleton, that area. But until that really happens, I'm not really seeing the validity and the need for the corridor bus until that really has a synonymous approach to it, because that's, you know, if we get halfway, it doesn't do anybody any good, so. And of course, the overall impact of how many rider, the ridership that's needed to facilitate that. So I'm really looking at our door-to-door operation, how we're really successful with that, and then we can branch off as time develops and the community develops further, but I'm really, I would like to focus on just making sure that we're hitting those service, on-demand services, and you're doing, I mean, you're presenting proposals, which is good, but that's really, I think, my focus, especially if I'm going to vote on something that needs to support from the taxpayers' dollars, you know, we want to make sure we're getting the most paying for a buck, which every community should be striving for that, but we can only deal with Eagle, so that's kind of where I'm at with that.
Okay. All right, anything else? All right, thank you, sir.
Mr. Mayor, if I, if I may?
Yep.
I hope what you got from, from this presentation is that in, indeed, the proposal that we're making for FY23 is an on-demand service that would be operating door-to-door within that service area, which is the very same way that the Senior Center operates, with the exception that it's persons with disabilities, seniors, and veterans can actually travel outside this area to another point, so if you're going downtown or those locations, those residents, or those, those persons who qualify for that, either senior or persons with disability or veteran status can, would, can now, and would continue to be able to travel outside that service area. It's just opening the door up for the general public to travel within the City of Eagle, door-to-door, or to these locations that are, have a higher probability to connect to the, to the broader region. And the intent behind that is to, again, focus the resources on, on City of Eagle residents being able to travel within the City of Eagle to locations that, that make sense to them. So I hope that was clear. And the, the investment, the longer-term investments of fixed route service along the corridor aren't part of this proposal, just wanted to keep that in the back of people's minds, that long-term, yes, that's what we're working on, and those are the conversations we're having with the other jurisdictions.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilman Bond?
Just a quick follow-up. How would somebody, is this like an app-based system, or we haven't, when you say kind of door-to-door, would this be a, I make a phone call, or I have an app-based, or what is it?
Mr. Mayor, Councilman Brown, the way that this works is it's, would work the same way that the current on-demand service in Nampa and Caldwell work, so somebody would call in and be able to book a ride, they could use their smartphone on, on an app to book a ride, they could use their desktop to do that. So there's a number of different ways that, that a resident could, could request a ride. We would want to take advantage of the existing bus stops that are out, that are still out there as part of the, of the old fixed route service, just so that, as a sign that says, hey, you can ride the bus, have information about how to request a ride, doesn't have to be at those stops, but it's just a billboard, if you will, about transit service that's available in the city. We would be promoting the service the same way we promote any route on our, on our cert, on our website. All the other routes that would be out there, this would be part of that, you could, and then you would just use the, it's, via is the particular software provider, they would request a ride using an app, calling in, or a desktop.
Mr. Mayor, follow up?
Councilman Bond?
So on this one, okay, from, from Eagle out, would I do the same thing if I'm at Garry and Bunch, so I can do the, both ways?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, sir, thanks.
You're very welcome.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right, we still have four minutes before we can start public hearings, so we'll give it a four-minute break and come on back. All right, it's six o'clock, we'll get started here. All public hearing items are considered action items. Public hearings will not begin prior to 6:00 PM. The Eagle City Council is taking both in-person and remote public comment via WebEx. Meeting login instructions are posted on the website. If you just want to watch the meeting without giving testimony, please watch the live stream at the website. Public hearing, hearings are legally noticed hearings required by state law. The public may provide formal testimony regarding the application or issue before the city council. This testimony will become part of the hearing record for that application or matter. Public hearing testimony time limits. Individuals testifying are allotted three minutes for non-repetitive. Testimony, disclosure of ex parte, or conflict of interest?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
I do attend the church, Restore This Coming Up on 10A, so at that point, I'd like to recuse myself from the dais and wait till the next topic.
Okay. All right, then, we will move on to type 10A, action item, RZ-12-08, MOD4, Development Agreement Modification, Restored Community Church. Let's see, applicant here to? You, you can actually go to there if you'd like, yep?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council. My name's Randy Haverfield with Architecture Northwest. I'm here representing the Restored Christian Community Church on Floating Feather. Basically, what we're looking for here is just a modification request of the allowable area that was defined in a earlier development agreement. Our initial request was for just an additional 1%, but staff through their good work has determined that surrounding areas are allowing up to 15%. So if that is a possibility, we'd definitely, we'd be interested in, in having that for future potential expansion on the property. The, the property, if you know it, has an eastern access, or along the eastern property line off of Floating Feather. Plan on retaining that, asks, accesses our, our primary point of access to the development, placing the building forward in the front half on the west side of the property, which is basically a field today, and then providing an emergency-only access on the northwest corner, which ACHD is in support of, they just didn't want us to have a full access. But it would be very helpful to be able to provide fire service around the building with a T-turn at that point, instead of having to go back out onto Floating Feather. I, the, the packet is pretty self-explanatory, and I'm sure you've had the time to already look it over, but I'm here to answer any questions you might have, and listen to the staff's report along with you, and then come back up to answer any questions you might have.
Okay, any questions? No? All right, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Mike Williams, plain zoning staff. The request is to modify the development agreement, as Mr. Haverfield has covered, to allow additional lot coverage on their property. The property is currently zoned AR, which is agricultural residential, which only allows for a 10% maximum lot coverage of all the structures located within the property. The site's located right next to Creekwater subdivision, east of North Park Lane on the south side of Floating Feather Road. The high school is in this general area to the south. The site plan, and this shows the actual footprint of the proposed new church facility. Landscape plan, it actually provided a better layout showing what's on the site currently today. And then the issue of special concern is because the property is zoned ARDA, which is agricultural residential with a development agreement, I want to give a point of clarification. It wasn't the development agreement that restricted them to the 10%. Eagle City code restricts the AR zone to no more than 10% maximum lot coverage. The staff recommendation, and Mr. Haverfield touched on it, they originally were asking only for, I believe it was 11.1%. Now, in 2008, when this came through, the original annexation and rezone, the church was originally approved through the county. And then they requested annexation to the city prior to expansion of the church, because they knew that they were going to expand this facility. The original development agreement that's associated with this site showed a larger footprint than what they're actually proposing today. But the reason that they are exceeding the 10% is, as you recall, they did an addition to the existing church facility. They had converted a residential home to a church facility. They did an addition to that so they would have additional room, because the church was growing rather quickly prior to coming in with the new facility. And then when they came in with the new facility, that's when they discovered that they're exceeding the 10% maximum lot coverage. In staff's analysis, as we reviewed this, we found that the Creekwater subdivision, which is a residential subdivision to the west, allows for up to 40% maximum lot coverage, and that's typical with a residential subdivision. And then it's bordered on the west, Creekwater's on the east, excuse me, and bordered on the west by a small subdivision, which is a two-lot subdivision, which is residential estate. And that allows up to 15% lot coverage. They could actually come in and request a rezone to the residential estate, which would be a much longer and more tedious process to go through two public hearings, which would grant them the 15% maximum lot coverage. But with the high school adjacent to this, Creekwater to the east, the residential estate to the west, staff, if you choose to approve this, is recommending that we take it, allow them to do 15%. So that way, if they need additional additions in the future to the church and want to do something else on their property, that will give them some flexibility to do that. With that, staff, it stands for questions.
Okay, any questions for staff?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Bond.
So basically, you go back to the rezone. So the normal procedure would be, is if it was just a general resident, we would say, go do a rezone and come back, correct?
And, Mr. Mayor and Councilmember Bond, no. If they wanted to come in and rezone, and rezone to the RE, which is residential estate, that would automatically give them the 15% lot coverage, because that's the maximum lot coverage for that zone. The property is actually, this is in a location that's designated, I believe it's large lot residential, which allows for either one unit per one acre, one unit per two acres. As part of that, they could ask for an R1 zoning designation, get a 35% maximum lot coverage. And as part of that zoning designation, we would need to do a development agreement associated with that to allow for the church facility to be located there, because that would be required, because it typically requires a conditional use permit. This is the easiest, quickest process.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, just follow-up.
Yep, Councilman Bond.
Okay, easy, quick, but I mean, is it, I mean, what I'm trying to stay away from is, are we doing something here for a group that we wouldn't do for anybody else? Or would we normally ask somebody to go through the rezoning?
Mayor Pearson, Councilmember Bond, based on the use, I don't think we're doing something different here than we would do for anything else, anyone else.
Okay, that's what I'm after. Thanks.
Any other questions for staff? No?
That's true.
Okay. See who signed up for the public hearing here, and if you didn't sign up, we'll call out afterwards when we're done to see if anybody else wants to testify. Mr. Bender. You can give your name and address for the record, please, sir.
Steve Bender, 1235 North Seven Oaks Place, Eagle, Idaho. I, too, attend Restored Community Church. And I know we at least have one officer here, no EMTs, but I'm in favor of this 15% exception. And I know you're not used to me saying that. But the difference is that this church has been there for several years. It has grown tremendously. The pastor can correct my numbers if he wants to. I think we were at, at the start of COVID, around 100 or a little bit less worshippers. During COVID, we grew by leaps and bounds. We now have three packed services, one on Saturday and two on Sunday, because we can only seat 150 or 200 people. This new building will seat close to 700 in each service, and we will be set for getting rid of our temporary building out back. We can get rid of the tent. We can have a nice worship facility. And it's not, it's not out of the ordinary to allow that extra 1% over the 10% that's on an agricultural. We do currently have still that alfalfa field up front, which is why we didn't have to do the curb and sidewalk earlier. And that will no longer be an alfalfa field. It will now be the church. And I think it makes perfect sense to support this as the application came in, and I urge you all to please do so.
Okay, any questions for Mr. Mayor? No? All right, thank you, sir. Is there anybody else that'd like to speak that didn't sign up? Come on up. When you get to the microphone, you can give your name and address, please, for the record.
Hi, my name is Elizabeth Smith, and I live at 1151 North Creekwater Way in Eagle. And so our backyard directly overlooks everything with the church. And I just showed up tonight because I wanted to say that they've been great neighbors. I don't attend the church, but they've been thoughtful neighbors, and so I just wanted to support. I'm in favor for what they're doing. I think that they'll continue to be thoughtful of, I'm just one neighbor along the row, but I think they're super thoughtful for all the events, and I think that they'll continue to act that way. So I wouldn't want to, I wouldn't want to see anything that they're trying to accomplish be denied.
Okay, thank you. Any questions?
Mr. Mayor.
Got a question for you?
No, Ms. Smith, so a quick question. Relative to, I guess, Sunday services and stuff like that, any issue with getting out of, like, any transportation issues?
No, I mean, and to be quite honest, like, I don't try to get out during that time, but it's way bigger of an issue during school time. You know, that's, that's the issue. I don't think that there's any issue with the church, with the preschool that they have there. I don't, I don't notice anything. To be quite honest, like, our house is sort of in a fishbowl, so we kind of close the blinds during church time, but that's, that's how it affects us and nothing else.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else that didn't sign up that would like to speak? No? Okay. Staff have something they want to...
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, one more request by staff. If you choose to approve this, staff has attached a recommended modification to that development agreement. And as part of that motion, would you approve to direct the mayor to sign that version of the modification? Therefore, we wouldn't have to bring it back before you at a future date.
All right, would the applicant like to rebut anything that was said, or have any more information? No? Okay, then we'll go ahead and close the public hearing. Any discussion or motions?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Councilman.
More discussion, actually, and question for, okay. Mike, quick question for you. So we've had two things right, because there's kind of, one is the applicant requested the 1.8% request as opposed to your proposal for 311 would be a maximum lot coverage, not to exceed 15%. Are we okay with going with this one, even though the applicant only asked for the 1.2%? Are we okay in going beyond that?
Mr. Mayor and Councilmember Bond, that's why you're in that seat. You make that final decision. If you would like to go with what the applicant's requesting, that's fine. Staff, based on what's surrounding the area, if you choose to go that route, provided the option to go to 15%.
Okay, Councilmember Ginsburg.
Mr. Mayor, I would just like to, in discussion with the rest of the council, say that I do agree with Mike's recommendation of 3.11 to include the maximum lot coverage to not exceed 15%. So I would be in support of the staff recommendation for that.
I agree with Melissa's recommendation as well.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Councilman Bond.
Like making a motion to approve action item 10A, RZ-12-08, MOD 4, Development Agreement Modification, Restored Community Church, to adjust the conditions of rule to add 3.11. Maximum lot coverage of property shall not exceed 15%. And, where do we go? I lost it. And to direct the mayor to sign the modification. Good? Okay.
All right, there's a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Move in second, any more discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Can you grab Councilman Pike real quick? All right, we're moving on to item 10B, action item CU-03-18, MOD, Building Height Exception, AMS Hospitality.
And how do I... I believe your keys will work. Yeah, go ahead and try it.
I have these. Is it the same ones?
Oh, they're different.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, thank you for having us this evening. We're here to ask your approval of a height modification in Molinary Park for the third parcel that would allow construction of, new construction of a Marriott Residence Inn Hotel on the further, east furthest portion of Molinary Park. The park was originally, there's an existing height conditional use permit already in place for Molinary Park of allowable height of 45 feet. At the time that that was put into place, the third parcel did not, was not included in the 45-foot height limit, because there was not a use proposed for that parcel at the time. Since then, the Residence Inn has been proposed for that site, and a portion of the site has been reserved for the potential development of a future restaurant as well. The renderings that were distributed to you are amendments to the material that was previously submitted to staff. We've been working with staff for quite some time to develop the project, and we'll get it, I'll give you a brief background at the end of the presentation. Wanted to introduce some of the people that are with us this evening. Mr. John Cooper, Chief Development Officer for AMS Hospitality. Walter Lindgren, Lindgren LeBree Architects. We've been collaborating with him in his office to get a closer connection to Eagle and better understand your objectives and perspectives. And our landscape architect, Jim Meehan, who is also the landscape architect for all of Molinary Park, he's been retained for this project as well. So the, the purpose of the hearing this evening is really strictly just the height modification. It's not designer view. So I'll focus primarily on the height of the proposed building. The vast majority of the roof line of the building falls considerably under the maximum height. So 76% of the perimeter of the building reaches a height of only 48 to 49 feet. That would typically be maybe the height of a three-story hotel. Only 24% of it reaches taller than that to a height of, maximum height of 54 feet and one inch. That occurs just at the accents, at the ends of the building. I want to point out in this particular view of the project, where this view would be taken from Highway 44, looking north, and because we were able to, because we're proposing a four-story hotel, we were able to condense that on a smaller footprint of the site, thereby opening up view corridors to the mountains and increasing the landscape on the site to a much greater degree than a three-story building would have covered. This is a view from the inside of Molinary Park, looking in the north. Again, the building is, you know, quite, quite small compared to other four-story buildings and lots of landscape. This is a close-up of where the different heights occur. The red balloon there, number one, shows the vast majority, the 76% of the perimeter at only 48 or 49 feet. And then the accent towers at the ends of the building and in the center of the building at the rival area, the balloon number two, reaching up to 54 feet and one inch. We understand that the proposal is for maximum height of 54 inches. We would request the additional inch, or we would be glad to redesign to meet the 54 feet, as you will. Just looking back to some of the developments that led up to the current design, we looked at a three-story building and quickly discarded that option. It just covered the entire site. It blocked all of view corridors, left very little of the site left for landscape. That led us to a four-story addition, this, a four-story hotel, this being a very early version of that design. And we worked, and the city came back to us and said they wanted more texture, more local relevance, a warmer building, more detail. And that, so the current design tries to appeal to an urban aesthetic that would, that we feel would be very progressive and designed forward for Eagle, but yet recall some of the warmth and character of Eagle. These are some of the concept images for the interior that would be fully integrated with the exterior, and the current design for the exterior. Again, pointing out in this view, the brown element in the center being the elevator core reaching to 40, 50, 40, 50, 54 feet, and then all the white and beige portions of the building, undulating up and down at 48 to 49 feet. A different view, showing the articulations at the end. That's a brief summary of the building. Could I answer any questions?
Council? Councilman Pike?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First of all, so those, the brown indicator was with the height exception. Are the elevator shafts, are the stairwells as well, or is that just for aesthetic purposes as the undulation of the roof line?
Both. The, there's, there's three, three brown elements with sloped roofs. Here, you see it at both, both ends of the building and at the center of the building. Those three elements all have the sloped accents, which help break... Those three elements all have the sloped accents which help break up the roof line so that breaks out of the boxiness feel of, feel of it, if you will, and that also marks the stairwells and the elevator car.
Okay, so the two ends are the stairwells themselves and the elevator is the center one in lobby area?
Yes, sir.
Most likely, yeah. So it's aesthetics and the need for a elevation, elevator within the shaft there, so, is it hydraulic or?
It is a, what is the correct term, machineless, a machine roomless?
Let's say you won't have a side elevator machine room to facilitate the components, it'll be self-sustained?
Yes, sir. And so it's, the idea of that type of elevator is it has a very sharp penthouse.
Yeah.
So the elevator penthouse is in fact not the highest part of the building.
And there's no parapet walling around the roof lines anywhere?
The parapet line would be the white and beige portions of the building.
Okay.
That measure 48 and 49 feet.
And what's parapet height on those, three feet, five feet?
From the, from the roof side?
Yeah, the roof line?
Closer to 18 inches, just, we've allowed a minimum amount.
It's not really a parapet, then it's a minimal drop for the flat roof?
Correct, just to accommodate the roof insulation and the slope of the roof. Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Councilman Bond?
Mr. Mayor, with a different, so yeah, the two elevation models, one was a three-story versus the four-story, what's the total room difference between those two, or is there?
It was the same at 131 rooms.
Okay, so the exact number of rooms?
I'm sorry?
Same number of rooms?
Yes, sir.
All right, perfect, thanks.
Okay, any other questions for the applicant?
I may point out that the number of rooms is very close to what Marriott requires or proposes for their prototype hotel for a Residence Inn. We've exceeded the design standards for the Marriott prototype in almost every way. This is really a very customized hotel, it is not a prototype. Both the exterior and the interiors are all, have all been designed for Eagle and for the feel of Eagle. But I also would like to say that Marriott, in most people's opinion, is probably the highest standard of hotel operations of the industry, and Residence Inn is one of their most successful brands, so we would be very glad to bring a Residence Inn to Eagle, Idaho.
Okay, any other questions at this time? Nope? All right, and we'll hear from staff. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of the council, and once again, Mike Williams, Plaine zoning staff. Tonight you have before you a request for a height exception for a hotel located within the Molinari Park development. Their request is for 54 feet, that's part of the presentation, they asked for 54 feet and one inch. Sometimes I find it hard, how do you determine the one inch? They'll show that on the site of plans, but is that truly what's out there? So keep that in the back of your mind as you listen to the presentations and also for your final decision. Their request is in association with a four-story hotel. They covered the reason for the four stories, it's to reduce the footprint and increase landscaping as well as increase the view corridor. The 4.36 acre site is located within Molinari Park and is at the southwest corner of East Plaza and State Highway 44 in this general location. Site plan, I'm gonna go through these really quickly and then we're gonna get into why we're here tonight. They meet all the criteria associated with this zone with the exception of the height, and based on Eagle City Code, with the exception of the downtown development area and the transition development area, which allow for a 40-foot height, which they'd still be requesting a height exception, this area is still restricted at that 35-foot maximum height. Here's the issues of special concern, and there's three issues here that need to be addressed as part of this review. The Molinari Park Development Agreement that's associated with the site, and he touched on this, and, but I'm gonna touch, take it one step further into why we're here. Yes, there was a height exception approved with this development. Yes, they originally requested a height, and I believe it was 60 feet at the time for this commercial area, but the council at the time, being that we didn't have anything in front of us for proposed uses, when they made their final decision, the only height exceptions they allowed for was the multifamily product and the townhouse product that's located west of this portion of the site. Then they, at the same time they did that, they added a condition that basically stated, if the applicant, in the event the applicant desires a height exception for a commercial building in the future, the applicant shall submit a conditional use permit modification application to be reviewed and approved by the city council. The conditional use permit modification for a height exception shall be approved by the city council prior to, to design review application for the proposed building being considered by the design review board. So, they directed, because typically when you have a height exception, it will go through the Plaine Zoning Commission for recommendation by the commission prior to come into this body for final action. And because due to the fact that the council at the time said, you know what, we're not gonna give you your 60 feet, but in the event you desire that, come back, we'll do a conditional use, we'll review it as conditional use modification, and bring it back before this body for that final decision. I just wanted to provide that clarification so we understand procedure. One of the items in 38, and I have this underlined and highlighted for a reason, there were anticipated architectural styles within this development, and as part of that, they, like I previously said, we didn't know what was coming in for the commercial portion, but there were, for the townhomes, there was an architectural design, as well as for the multifamily portion of the project, that they also had, and I believe it was Italianate. But they did go on, it says, the commercial retail buildings, multifamily residential buildings, and pool house shall be required to meet the design review requirements set forth in Eagle City Code in the Eagle Architecture and Site Design Book. That is very important here. As we look at, and I agree, this is not a designer view application in front of you, but with that being said, it's a height exception. And part of the height exception, you're gonna get in Eagle City Code on conditional use permits, to grant a conditional use permit, you have to make findings. And there's one finding, I mean, most of the findings, there's nine findings, you can make eight of them fairly easily, but there is one finding with the surrounding area and what's going on down there, and it states, will be designed, constructed, operated, and maintained to be harmonious and appropriate in appearance with existing or intended character of the general vicinity, and that such use will not change the essential character of the same area. Well, we all know what's in the area today, and, I mean, you drive down Eagle Road at any time and you can see the architecture in that area. Now granted, this is on the north side of the road, and the multifamily product, once it's approved and is constructed, will have a different style of architecture that's what's on the south, but you still have to make the finding how this is designed, constructed, and will be harmonious with everything adjacent to it. While they've showed you elevations tonight, and I'm gonna say it again, this is not the designer view, but they're asking for a height exception here. You have to show why and how it's harmonious. We have not seen the multifamily product and how this is going to fit in with the multifamily product next door, and maybe, I mean, if they could come up and show how it blends in with that, it won't be as big an issue, but not knowing today what's being constructed there, or seeing those elevations to date, we can't see how it's truly harmonious. I will tell, I covered the maximum height as 35 feet, and I will also state as part of that, the multifamily, part of the multifamily, they were granted a height exception to 45 feet. So the difference between the hotel and the multifamily, and there's, there's just a street that separates the two. So with that street that separates the two, I mean, to the west, if those are at 45 feet, there's only like a nine-foot difference that's going to be between the hotel and multifamily. So in height, I think you can show how it's gonna be harmonious. The question is, is how is, how is it gonna be harmonious, and that will be washed out in design review. So if you approve this tonight, we're gonna have to make sure when the hotel comes through for their design review, that you're also looking and taking into consideration that multifamily product to show how the two of them are harmonious with each other. Eagle City Code 2A6 talks about, and that, I covered that, that all buildings spires poles and tennis steeples, and I'll cut through all that, because I talked about the downtown development area as well as the transitional development area, is 35 feet, and the council may, with the approval of a conditional use permit, allow for a height exception. So, I'm gonna throw some elevations at you as well. This is what is in the development agreement associated with the multifamily product. These are the elevations that are part of that contract. So you can look at these, and maybe this will help them on their rebuttal, maybe you can address that through the rebuttal, but I wanted to show what the multifamily in the development agreement looks like, but we haven't seen it as far as what the designer view has come through on a designer view application, which will come to you for final action to date. The building elevations, he's shown you some nicer building elevations tonight with more color to them. These came in late last week, and they're part of your packet tonight. This doesn't clearly show it, but they're requesting 54 feet, one inch, and that is at this point and the other point. There's only two points that are at the 54 feet, and this touches on it here. Most of hotels right around 49 feet, 10 inches, it's just those two wings that are at the 54 feet mark. And based on the information provided to staff, if the city council chooses to approve the height exception, and staff recommends, typically we put the site-specific conditions that are found on page, I believe it's page six in this case, but I wanna put them in front of you instead, talk through them really quick. The one that's key here is number four, or probably number three, if you go to 54 feet, one inch, you would need to change that. But what's key here is, the applicant shall submit a designer view application for the proposed building and site landscaping as required pursuant to Eagle City Code, showing how the building will be harmonious and appropriate in appearance with existing intended character of the area. The design shall be in conformance with the Eagle Architecture and Site Design Book, the applicant shall comply with all conditions required by the designer view board and city council prior to issuance of a zoning certificate. Part of showing how the building will be harmonious and appropriate, it's not just providing elevations, it's actually talking about it in the narrative to help with the findings associated with those decisions, to show how it's appropriate and harmonious with everything else within that general area. Last one should be number six, I don't know why I did a bullet on there. And with that, staff would stand for questions.
Councilman Pike?
Mr. Mayor, thank you. Mike, thanks for your, your update on that as well. I wanna go back to the fundamental reason why we had a height requirement within this code, city code, and it was based on the fire department's need. So these days, that's almost, it's not a moot point, but it doesn't have the same teeth it did once in the past, so, especially with the two, the way the, the design of this hotel is, is put together, I gotta, I wanna make sure that the two points are made from the fire district's side and their requirements. The secondary emergency access, it's their responsibility to design that in their, when they're building their hotel, and the other is the aerial apparatus fire access placement abilities for that. So if those can be augmented and taken care of, it really, in my opinion, on the emergency side, which was the stipulation, the primary need for a height requirement, was set based on the fire department's need. So if they can make those two adjustments to any of the design, then it kinda meets the, the need for the availability of an increased height for that building, I would think.
Okay.
Ms. Mayor?
Councilman Bond?
Uh, it's Mike, couple questions. First one, I think we can go past the, how many height exemptions have we made so far in the city? I think we're up, what, eight or nine? Or maybe seven or eight?
Mr. Mayor and Councilmember Bond, I'm running them through my head, and I know that there's probably a few before I even came to the city of Eagle, but I've been here 17 years, and I can probably think of five or six right off the top of my head, and one, two, three of these are in close proximity to this site.
And, oh, Mr. Mayor?
Excuse me. Five of these are in close proximity to this site, because I forgot about Eagle Lakes.
Oh, that way, okay. And what are the height of most of those, roughly, I think the highest one is 65 feet? Or do we have one?
And, Mr. Mayor and Councilmember Bond, the highest the city, since I've been here that we've allowed is 60.
Okay.
And that was, that was 10 feet of that, it was a 50-foot height exception with 10 feet of uninhabitable, that was Lake Moore, and then the Pet IQ, I believe was at 59 feet, and I think the hotel that's across the street from this side was also right around 59 feet.
Yeah. Mr. Mayor, one more. With the site conditions of approval, this is the big one, so I think the biggest thing we're looking at is basically the harmonious component, whether or not it's gonna be harmonious with the rest of Molinari. Do these sites, do these site conditions, in your opinion, will that basically hold them accountable so that this entire development will be harmonious with each other?
Mr. Mayor and Councilmember Bond, I believe it does, because they have to show how it's gonna be harmonious, and the easiest, their easiest avenue to show how it's gonna be harmonious is to show how it ties into the rest of the Molinari development.
Good. Thanks.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Ginsburg?
Mike, with the other height exemptions that you have, that you just stated, like Pet IQ and the Residence Inn across the street, did that already have mature landscaping that was a part of the, the exemption for that height requirement?
Mr. Mayor and Councilmember Ginselberger, very observant, yes it did. There was mature landscaping adjacent to Eagle Road that was part of the Eagle River development, and as you drive by there today, it's obvious, because of the mature landscaping that helps break up those elevations or that, that structure because of the height of those trees, and especially in the, through the spring and summer and into the fall when the deciduous trees still have all their leaves on them.
And, Mr. Mayor, follow up, and so, just to clarify, this property does not have any mature landscaping on it currently, correct?
And, Mr. Mayor and Councilmember Ginselberger, they, on the portion that's associated with the residential development, they have a, I believe a 10-foot high berm in combination with the wall, which does have landscaping, it hasn't reached maturity yet. Since this is a commercial part of the development, they do not have mature landscaping in adjacent to State Highway 44 to date.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any more questions for staff at this point? Nope? All right, thanks, sir. Get the signup sheet, see who signed up, and for those that didn't, we will ask if you want to testify after. Jeffrey Deegan?
I'm the presenter.
Oh, okay, yep, sorry. Just wanted to, okay, that's all that was on there, is there anybody else that would like to testify that's here tonight in the audience?
No.
All right, then we will allow the applicant to come up and rebut. Anything that staff said or questions might be there?
Thank you, I'd like to offer some additional information in response to the questions. How do I, where is my presentation? The first question, I think Councilman Pike, that you raised about fire department access, we paid close attention to fire department access in the design of the building to date. All of the drive aisles in the entire site are 26 feet wide, they're only required to be 25 feet wide. We've tested the turtling radiuses on every corner of the circulation within the site to confirm that the fire trucks can adequately get through there with ample access. We have, this site plan does not show a second access to the west, there, there is a, how to best show this, do I have a cursor? Right, right here, the- Right, right here, the, we now have a curb cut that connects site access to the Molinari Park driveways. So we have two, two emergency, you know, routes in and out of the site. The ladder access for the truck, we've provided the fire department requirements for ladder access on each of the long wings, so we've exceeded the number and locations of fire department ladder access at the department requests. So we hope, we hope we have it covered. Fire life safety is Marriott's top concern and priority. They do not compromise anything on fire and life safety. Second question raised, I believe, by Councilwoman?
Gindelsberger.
Thank you very much, about landscape. You're correct, the site currently, it does not have landscape. We are hoping with, hopefully receiving approvals from you in a timely manner, that we will be able to start construction this summer. The entire, even though the east portion of the site is reserved for a potential restaurant in the future, the design will be that we landscape the entire site. There's also a very small portion of the site on the northeast corner that is not owned by the applicant, but it will be landscaped as part of this project as well. We will put in all of the perimeter landscape in first. We'd like to get that in this summer so that it has a year to mature before the hotel opens. And also invite Mr. Jim Meehan, landscape architect, if he cares to, to speak about the landscape that's designed, that's going into it. The direction was that all the sizes of landscape plant material exceed that required by code going in on, and the initial planting. So we're very sensitive to landscape. It was the driving factor for the original layout of the design. And then the third comment to Mr. Williams, thank you for your amplification and details about height, height and the background of this. I want to speak just very briefly about the requirement for harmonious and appropriate. I know this is not a designer review, but this has been a very talked-about topic with the ownership and design team. And although this is not a designer review meeting, I want to express my personal opinion as a design professional, that I think urban design is a very dynamic and developing aesthetic. Cities benefit from diversity in their architecture and expressions. Whether or not a building is harmonious and appropriate is definitely viewed in context, but that does not necessarily, in my opinion, mean that it needs to be identical in style to the buildings surrounding it. That, you know, the fact that buildings have different character and different, and different character to them is what contributes to the richness and fabric of urban, urban settings. So in closing, I would only ask you to look at the design and say, is this a building that you would be proud of to have in the city of Eagle? And we certainly hope it would be.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Yep.
Jim Mayen, 2002 South Vista, Boise, Idaho. As a landscape architect for this, and to the Councilwoman's point, I have a very hard name to pronounce, but not that hard, is as part of the overall infrastructure package that was the first part of the approvals for Molinari Park, we do actually have 50 feet of landscaping in front of the hotel with a three-foot berm. Berms aren't required for commercial, but we, we did that. And so that's already approved and is under construction. They've started with, of course, the wall and all the landscaping on that, but that'll actually be in the ground in front of our project. So it'll be on the south up against State Street. And then as we come in with our next, so we'll have 20 more feet of landscaping with every, every, every plant that we specified, I think exceeds all the city minimums. So that'll come in on top of the 50 feet and will be a year, possibly planted in the same year, this same year. But, you know, that'll all come in probably a year and a half to two years before the hotel's completely built and occupied. So we should have a good jumpstart. It won't be fully mature, but it'll be in great excess to almost any other project on State Street. So I thought I'd just address at least that point. And I think the overall project, in speaking to the point of going to this height exemption as a question, by going to this height, you know, we've got now just a little over 15% of landscape to the 10% required, and so we're really happy with, as landscape architects, with what we were able to produce because they wanted to go this direction. I think it's going to produce a much better product for the city of Eagle. Stand for any questions.
Any questions? No? Okay, thank you. All right, any more questions for the applicant before I close the public hearing? Nope. Mr. Williams, did you want to say something before I close the public hearing?
Yes, sir, thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, and I'm sure with Victor, because they may want to rebut, I want to add something. They've laid it out in front of you, the applicants laid it out in front of you, that they're going to exceed the landscape standards associated with the site. The one thing I would ask, if that's going to be the case, and they're proposing that, that you would add an additional site-specific condition if you choose to approve this. I heard a three-foot berm and 50 feet wide of landscaping with landscaping that exceeds the minimum standards of Eagle City Code. Please add that as a condition to be reviewed and approved by the Design Review Board and City Council prior to the issuance of a zoning certificate for the site.
Ms. Mayor?
Yes, Counselman Bond?
Mike, what's the, so three-foot berm, 50-foot?
Mayor Pearson, Councilmember Bond, I believe that's what Mr. Mayen stated.
Just foot, 50-foot area, 50-foot?
50-foot wide area.
Okay. Applicant want to say anything to that, or? No? Okay. All right, then we'll go ahead and close the public hearing. And what's your pleasure, counsel?
Mr. Mayor, discussion prior to a motion?
Counselman Pike?
Thank you, I just want to make a few comments to, to this, and it was brought up by the applicant and Mike Williams for us, the city. But there are other buildings within the height exception in a close proximity to this applicant proposal for the hotel. It does fall within the Urban Renewal Agency's borders and boundaries, and also for our downtown and the economic vitality and downtown support that we're looking for. Just as another comment is by, and I think this helps support capturing the dollars of the transient population coming in and through Eagle to offset some of our residential requirements, our total percentages of the growth within the city of residential. So I'm looking at this as something that is, even though the, I'll get into the design review later, I think the, the height exception has been expressed in the reason to support that 51 feet, one inch, based on the need, and it doesn't go outside of some of the parameters that have already shown to be developed within the area. So just those caught, those thoughts prior to any kind of a motion.
Okay. Any other discussion before a motion?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Gindelsberger?
Discussion. To follow up on the flip side of what Counselman Pike had said, I actually feel the opposite. I believe this aesthetic, the aesthetic presented on this particular project is not cohesive with the look and design of Eagle. I see some of the other items that were presented in our packet that had a much more downtown Eagle feel. I understand, pardon me, the urban nature of how designs are going now, I don't feel that Eagle is urban. Eagle has a different design aesthetic that I think is why people decide to move here, has more of a small-town feel, considering the nature of the height that is coming into the west side of this project. I, to, to support something at a higher height requirement, I'm not, I'm not there at this time. So just wanted to discuss that with counsel on that as well.
Hey, Mr. Mayor, can I clarify my statement on the height requirement?
Counselman Pike?
Sure, it wasn't for the aesthetics of the building design itself, it was strictly my opinion on the height of it and it being in line with some of the other hotels and the Pet IQ that has already been established within a proximity of the height. Had nothing to do with the aesthetics of it, but it also capturing some of the economic transient, the transient population, I think that's important to factor in when we're looking at ways of capturing it at better tax base, coming in just outside, offsetting just residential development, is kind of my point of that. But this was strictly on a height thing, not the aesthetics of the building whatsoever, just so for clarification.
Okay. Any more discussion?
Mr. Mayor, I was trying to find Councilwoman Gindelsberger, I know you, the designs you're speaking of were included in our packet, our original packet, and I'm trying to find those right now, but I, I can't find them in the huge document that I have.
Here, this one?
I believe Mr. Williams had emailed them.
Right, separate document.
Yeah, it's a separate document with some of the items that had more of a bit of a gable and, you know, corbels on the outside, some more wood designs. I think Mr. Williams has that on there.
I just would like to see those up on the screen if I could.
Mr. Mayor, Victor, if it's part of their packet, it wasn't part of my PowerPoint, but if it's part of their packet, I can pop them up, correct?
Mr. Mayor and Mike, yes.
Thank you. There's the Pet IQ building, Homewood Suites across the street. Here's the Residence Inn, and none of, I don't know the locations of these Residence Inns, but this is some of the architecture that was, staff did some research to find other Residence Inns, Marriott's, to look at some other architectural options. This one is probably closer to what they're proposing, the only difference is they have balconies. Balconies on this would be great because it has a great view of Bogus, but that can all be washed out in design review. Another one with balconies, definitely not in Eagle style there, but those were some of the elevations that were provided as part of your packet.
Mr. Mayor?
Counselman Pike?
Mike, can you go back to the Marriott, the one over on Riverside, I think, our, ours?
Oh, the Homewood Suites?
Yeah, Homewood, yes. Because, I mean, we're not, here, here again, I've got a, I guess my point here is, we're strictly talking about a height requirement here.
Correct.
Not the aesthetics and the design review, so with, I don't know what the total height on this, is it the pitch of the portion of the building, we're underneath the marquee of Homewood Suites, but do we know what that height right there is off the top?
Mr. Mayor and Councilmember Pike, I believe it was 59 feet, 11 inches.
So with, with that, that's the point, and I think I'm trying to stress to us is, I don't, I'm in total agreement with the aesthetics, that we're not into that right now, though. This is specifically for the height of the building, and then we'll get into design review later.
Correct.
So that's the point that I want to stress, I guess.
And Mr. Mayor, members of the council, the point that staff was trying to make as part of their recommendation, it may not be these styles of architecture, or you may require it to be something similar to these styles of architecture, but at a minimum, as part of the conditional use permit, to show how it's harmonious and appropriate, I mean, at least, like Mr. Deegan stated, it doesn't have to match perfectly with what's going on with Molinari, but at least show how it blends in with what's going on with Molinari. And that's what they're going to be tasked to do if you choose to approve it under the recommended site-specific conditions.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, my name is Bill Vaughn, I'm the city zoning administrator, and I just wanted to offer an observation from some of your dialogue, and that is, you've parsed out this, this idea that it's a conditional use permit for the height exception, which is correct, and that you're not dealing with the architecture. But in fact, the conditional use permit is broad enough so that you can deal with the architecture. You, you can get into that level of specificity with this application. I just wanted to make that clear, thank you.
Ms. Mayor?
Yes, Counselman Bond?
Go back to, I guess there's a couple of things. One, we talked about the height exemption, like, I think we've set that, we've made multiple height exemptions primarily with hotels, the commercial component of that. With this one in particular, I mean, just looking at the three-story versus four-story, we're talking the same number of rooms, but purely from a visual perspective, four-story is better than three-story. Three-story, it spreads it out, but I have more green space, I'm a green person. I like, so no issue with the height exemption. The harmonious part, I'll be the first one, I think this looks really cool and all, but I'm not on design review for a reason, because I'm, they all look good to me. So the biggest, I think my biggest thing that we put out, and I'm really hoping that it is very stressed, is that this goes back, or not this goes back, depending on how we do this, but it does need to be harmonious with the adjacent development, so they look at least compatible with each other. And again, I think that's the design review, I believe site-specific conditions identified, I'm going to go, I'm going to trust Mike on this one and say that that'll take care of that, those one through six, and then adding the condition number seven with the setting in stone, that three-foot berm and 50-foot wide space, I think helps out on that. And again, I, I would prefer, like, my personal opinion is not, I don't want to talk about aesthetics or anything, because I don't know enough, honestly, to, to say anything. There's, I, my favorite building's the Fly Shop, that looks like an old, so that would just be my two cents.
Okay. All right, any more discussion or motion?
Mayor, am I allowed to?
We've already closed the public hearing, so.
Mr. Mayor?
Yep.
I will make a motion to approve action item 10B CU-03-18 mod building height exemption, AMS hospitality, adding site-specific conditions one through six, as well as adding, or identify, adding sites condition, site-specific condition number seven to include the three-foot berm and 50-foot wide area, that will also be sent to design review and reviewed back to city council. Is that correct, Mike, or am I messing anything up?
Let's get a second first.
Yeah, you're right.
There's a motion, is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay. Discussion?
Mr. Mayor and Councilmember Bond, did you want to include that the landscaping within that 50-foot wide buffer area exceeds the minimum requirements of Eagle City Code?
Yes, I did, and that's, that's why I hear that. So I'll, Mr. Mayor, I amend my motion to include the exceed, exceeded landscaping.
All right, does the second concur?
Yes, concur.
Okay. Any more discussion? All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
All right, motion carries. Okay, so we'll move on to item C, 10C, CU-03-22, change of non-conforming use, Craig R. Shotwell. Yep, take your time.
Name is Craig Shotwell, I live at 741 West Rush Court here in Eagle, and I am here to ask for approval or a conditional use permit that I submitted to the city. By way of background, I visited with the council back in January, and I was advised to go down the conditional use permit process for the addition of our house. Currently, we have a house which I will show you on the screen here, where this corner of the house is in non-conformance with the city Eagle 50-feet setback. The house was built back in 1991 under Ada County setback rules, which required you to be only 20 feet from the property line. which required you to be only 20 feet from the property line. So, that was a surprise to us, but we went forward and continued down at your suggestion and request that I continue down the conditional use permit process, which we have done. This is the, I hope, the final public hearing for it. The, the, part of the discussion with staff is that the, the amount of addition to the current existing house does not further encroach on the front setback. And the side setbacks to the west, which is here, is approximately 70 feet. Not the setback, but the building is 70 feet, which is well beyond the setback. And to the north, the setback is 30 feet, and we're somewhere around 50 feet. So, we're trying to design this additional extension to our home. Now, this home was designed to be a multi-generational home. My son and his wife and my grandson, he couldn't be here tonight because he's coaching soccer. They will be occupying one of the, one of the existing house that's existing right now. We have a connection to the both houses, which we both use. There, it's, it's a multiple use. It's approximately 400 square feet. It is used for music room, for dance room, as well as an exercise room, in which both families can participate. It is also used, we have a fairly large family that comes and visits. So, whenever we have get-together, family get-togethers for Christmas, Thanksgiving, special events, we also are able to use that room in order to extend dining room and, in order to gather together. If there's any questions that you have, I will be happy to answer them at this point.
Any questions? No, not at this time?
Okay.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the council, and Mike Williams, planning and staff, once again. Tonight, you have a request for conditional use permit. And what this request for is the change of a non-conforming use. As Mr. Shotwell discussed, and he pointed out during his presentation, that the existing home is currently located within the front yard setback that's required pursuant to Eagle City Code. When the home was constructed back in, well, first of all, let me hit the site. It's at the end of Rush Court, which is right off of Eagle Road. This is a site plan. It's not as great details what was, Mr. Shotwell is showing you, but what we're trying to show here, that the new addition will not encroach any farther into that front yard setback that's required pursuant to Eagle City Code. Everything else, other than where it encroaches into the front yard setback, is in conformance with Eagle City Code in regard to lot sizing, the side yard, rear yard setbacks, and the maximum lot coverage. Even with the addition, they'll still be able to, they'll be well below the maximum lot coverage permitted within the RE residential estate zoning designation. On May 22nd of 2000, this property was annexed into the City of Eagle. The home was constructed prior to that under Ada County Code. And Ada County Code has a much, well, it's less, I want to say it's maybe 20 feet that they allow within the RUT, Rural Urban Transition Zoning Designation. So, at the time, it was constructed in conformance with the code that was in effect. Then when Eagle annexed it and it was designated residential estate, our residential estate setback is 50 feet versus, I believe, the 20 feet that Ada County required. Excuse me, it's 25 feet. Site-specific conditions of approval, this is what's in your recommendation as far to be allowed, what's going to be allowed. The commission actually struck this one and then added a new condition of approval that states that they are, they can't encroach any farther in the front yard setback and then all other setbacks shall be in conformance with Eagle City Code. And that's in their recommendation. He showed you what they're proposing. One of the things that came out in correspondence you received, they're questioning, you know, the two families, whether or not this is a duplex. And the room that he discussed, that 400-square-foot room, I believe he stated, actually has a door that interconnects the entire home. So, it's literally one home. It may be multi-generational in family, but it's under our code and the way we review homes, it's one principal dwelling. It's not a, it's not a two-family dwelling because there's not a wall that completely separates the two dwelling units. It's one dwelling unit that's large, that can house basically two families. The, there's an opening here that goes into the addition, and then it actually goes into the existing house. But what we're here tonight to address is the front setback. Because even if he was just doing a smaller addition, he can't do an addition to anything on their property based on where, because the existing home encroaches into that front yard setback. And with that, staff, it stands for questions.
Any questions for staff?
Mr. Mayor?
Vaughn?
Mike, so you have right now the two site-specific conditions, two and three. Did you want to, did you say they wanted to change those? Or the ones that you had identified were the correct ones?
Mr. Mayor and Councilmember Vaughn, if you go to page seven of their findings, of the commission's findings, they actually, on number two, they struck the date that was based on the site plan of February 11th because Mr. Shotwell had provided a revised site plan. They referenced that site plan of April 4th, 2022. And that was the site plan he showed you tonight. They struck number three, and then they added site-specific condition number five. It says, "The proposed residential addition shall not encroach any farther into the front yard setback area than the existing dwelling. All remaining setbacks shall be in conformance with Eagle City Code Section 8-2-4." If you choose to approve this, you can make your, do a motion based off the planning and zoning recommendation.
Okay, that's where I was going. Then, Mr. Mayor, follow-up. Relative to the duplex discussion, if this was a duplex, the intent of that being if they were to shut that door, what would the setbacks be required for the duplex? Would they be any different?
Mr. Mayor and Councilmember Vaughn, it's not a matter of shutting the door. If they constructed a solid wall on this to where you have two separate entrances and they're not interconnected, it's a prohibited use. Setbacks don't even play in, it's a prohibited use.
All right, so, Mr. Mayor?
Yep.
So, with that one, could we add a site-specific, site-specific condition also that it be, that a wall not be, basically at that point, that you can't put a wall in there?
Absolutely.
Good, thanks.
All right, any more questions for staff? All right, we'll open up the public hearing. Thank you, sir. It's just the applicant. Is there anybody else that would like to speak that did not sign up? No? Okay, anything more from the applicant?
I would just like to ask if the city council would approve my conditional use permit.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Any more questions?
Yep, got a quick question.
Got one more question for you, sir, looks like.
Do you, Mr. Mayor?
Yep.
Do you see any issue with adding an additional site-specific condition? Basically, that would require you, that cannot build a permanent wall in between where you have the doors right now, basically making a duplex? Are you okay with that?
Not a problem, never was our intention.
I forgot, all right, thank you.
Anything else?
No? Okay, thank you. All right, we'll close the public hearing. Any discussion or motions from the council?
Mr. Mayor?
Yep, Councilman Vaughn?
Let's make out, just to go, I'll make a motion to approve action item 10C CU-03-22, change of non-conforming use with the site-specific conditions as identified by planning and zoning and adding site-specific condition number six, which is identifying that a solid wall cannot be constructed, creating a duplex.
All right, there's a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? No? All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
All right, we'll move on to item 11, new business, 11A. Action item DR-19-22, three apartment buildings, including 1,000-square-foot retail and common area landscaping within Molinari Park subdivision, Silverado Management.
Mr. Mayor, if you'd prefer, I'm willing to give a brief, a beef, a brief background to this application as it's somewhat unique in terms of the process that it's been through, that Emily can set up and give a brief overview of the rationale for our position. And then the applicant will be able to provide you a full presentation if you're okay with that process.
Okay.
The applicant and staff, including myself, had the opportunity to, opportunity to review this application early on before the design review application was made. The Molinari project was approved by the city council in, I think, June of 2019. And then this application was made earlier this year. When, when Mr. Lindgren and I were visiting about the layout of this application, the communication amongst us, between the two of us and amongst the group was whether or not the layout that's on the right of this screen, this is a basic part of it, and then Emily will get into more of it, versus the layout on this side of the screen constituted compliance with the development agreement. And what I evaluated through, back and forth through with Mr. Lindgren, was gaining information so that the city could make a determination with regard to whether or not this application complied with the development agreement. And I ultimately provided correspondence back to Mr. Lindgren and ultimately the applicant team that, I'll read what I said. I said, "Hi, Walter, after reviewing the development agreement, the exhibits within the development agreement and the site-specific conditions of, I'll paraphrase too, conditions of within the PUD, the, the applications are not in compliance with the aforementioned approvals. It is the city's position that a modification to the development agreement and the PUD would need to be sought for council action on the changes." And then item 3.3 within the development agreement states, and this is all in your packet, within, states, "The concept plan Exhibit C represents the owner's current concept for completion of the project. As the concept plan evolves, the city understands and agrees that certain changes to the concept may occur. If the city determines that any such changes require additional public comment due to potential impacts on surrounding property or the community, a public hearing shall be held on any proposed changes in the concept plan. Notice shall be provided as may be required by the city." It went on to say, "The city has determined that the proposed changes will require a public hearing so that the city council may accept public comment on the changes to evaluate potential impacts on surrounding property and the community." That was a, a strong recommendation made to the applicant, because I'm not the city. The city council is the, is the final authority body for the city. And so, and Mr. Lindgren and the applicant team opted to make a design review application and bring it forward to the, to the city council for your consideration. When we were at the designer review board, I gave the same presentation to the board, and Emily will give you a brief presentation that's the same as relates to the staff's position or recommendation as it relates to the, the fact that this plan does not comply with the provisions of the development agreement and that a development agreement modification ought to be sought first. The board recommended, the board only took a presentation by the city staff. The applicant was present and, and gave a brief dialogue with, with the designer review board, was willing to provide a longer dialogue, but the board felt that this was a determination that needed to be made by the city council before they got into a, a long presentation with regard to the, like, the architectural aspects of the, of the development and whatnot. With that, I just wanted to set the foundation for what this application is about before you and, and ask for Ms. Giraud to go next and, and present some additional details.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and council, Emily Giraud, planning staff for the record. So, as Bill stated, this application was for three apartment buildings within Molinari Park. And when reviewing this design review application, there were five items that were not in compliance with the development agreement, the preliminary development plan, preliminary plat, and overall landscape design review. So, again, on your screen, I apologize, it looks like these red lines have moved. So, on your screen is the concept plan that is in the development agreement. And then on the right was the layout and concept plan submitted with the design review application. The next item was site-specific condition number 12 that required greenscape on top of the covered parking spaces. So, on your left is the development agreement concept plan. The green rectangles are where those covered parking areas were. They were not only over the parking spaces, they were over the parking drive aisles. In addition, in the blue rectangles, there was tuck under parking, parking that was actually underneath the first, underneath the building. And then the second story, or the second floor was right above those parking spaces. On your right is the site plan in the design review packet. They have 21 carports that they proposed some artificial grass on top of. The next items regarding private road C in the concept plan, it was shown all along this southern drive aisle. And then the parking for the multifamily was to the north. The site plan in the design review, in the townhomes, followed that southern drive aisle. And now in the multifamily has moved north slightly and now has parking on both the north and south of that private road. The next item is regarding drive aisle locations and landscaping. The Molinari Park common area landscaping for the overall development showed the drive aisles in these locations in red, which now are where the pool area is located. There was also a drive aisle located down here, which is now where private road C has been shifted to. You also have another drive aisle here that is now no longer in that location. So, the overall common area landscape plan does not match the landscape plan that they've submitted with this application. And lastly, was site-specific condition number 25, which required a 10-foot-wide sidewalk in front of, in front of any of the commercial businesses within the multifamily. And there's a five-foot sidewalk shown in front of these two live-work units. With that, on April 14th, the Eagle Design Review Board voted three to zero, recommending denial of the application. And with that, I will stand for any questions.
Questions for staff?
Real quick, Mr. Mayor, Emily, can you pick, pull up the, the conditions, site-specific conditions again on the prior page? You had the ones that are non-conforming. Keep going. Those, were the five, those were the five, yeah?
Correct, yes.
Yeah, okay. I guess we'll make reference to those later, but I just wanted to make sure there was five. Okay, thanks.
All right, any other questions for staff at this point? Okay. I know this isn't a public hearing, but can we hear from the applicant? Mr. Lindgren, if you want to.
Great, thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. My name is Walter Lindgren. I'm with Lindgren-Libery Architecture, addresses 247 North Eagle Road here in Eagle, Idaho. Here to present our, just our case and a discussion about this project at Molinari Park, multifamily development portion. First of all, I just wanted to say, you know, I just appreciate what staff has communicated. We've, they've been really very straightforward and upfront with us, and we just appreciate the, the work that they do and the fact that we've been able to have that communication with them. I think it's been a healthy discussion, and even though we may not see things eye to eye on this particular application, but we'll just want to say that it's been very, very professional in the whole way. So, in front of you, you see that you're kind of just some imagery of, and I'm not going to get so much in- So in front of you, you see kind of just some imagery of, and I'm not going to get so much into the design of this project yet. I think there's some bigger issues that maybe we need council's guidance on, and in your wisdom, if you would. Just want to introduce some of the players on the project, the Molinari Park, the property owners. We have Mr. Brooke Cole from GWC Capital who's here present here, as well as Greg Mavay. The developers, actually Silverado Management, Joe Brown and Dave Hunter. They're going to actually be developing the project. And in addition, we also have Jim Myhan, which I actually said that right for once. Landscape architect who's here to address some of the conditions as presented. Just to kind of get you oriented, I think everybody knows where this project's at. Just a little bit of history, you may have seen this project come through. This is the Molinari Park Townhome project, which is to the west of this development. So it tried to maintain a similar type architecture, even though we've got obviously different, you know, uses and different densities. But trying to, I think, you know, the word I heard many times in the previous applications is the harmonious nature of the architecture and approach to the project. Just some site photos. I think, I think if you've been out there, anybody can see what a wonderful development is turning out to be. I've just never seen so much texture and interest in these roadways of any kind of development in the valley. It's just a beautiful, beautiful setting, and we just hope to add to that with this development. So as Emily and Bill have mentioned, the Molinari Park, multifamily, we've got three buildings that are, that comprise 200 total residential units. We also have in the northeast, excuse me, northwest corner of what we call Building A. Just to get you referenced, these three buildings, this is A. Building B is to the south, and C is to the east. So as I mentioned, four-story building, 200 units with 1,000 square foot of retail commercial space at the northwest corner of Building A. Consistent, that's all consistent with the DA. And again, just some other imagery to kind of get you oriented. So why are we here, and what are we requesting? There's two points I would, I guess I would point to. One is if the city council agrees, this application is in substantial compliance with the development agreement. Our view is that the project as proposed ought to continue through the design review process. We were denied that opportunity, you never had a chance to really present that. I understand why. I think there's some issues, maybe design review wasn't, you know, wasn't really in their purview to address. But we feel that, and hopefully our presentation today will show that that's the path, we believe, is the right path to take for this application. If, for some reason, the city council does not agree this application is in substantial compliance with the development agreement, we do request clarification of specific items deemed not in substantial compliance. That has yet, that opportunity has yet not been presented. So those are the two things. I think the former item is one that we're geared to, I guess, defend and present our case towards. So having said that, per the DA article 3.4, I don't know if you have, I think you have that information in your packets. One comment we do want to make is that the development of the residential portion of the property will be permitted through the design review process, and future conditional use permits for the residential development will not be required. I think what we're really pointing towards is the fact that we really feel that this process ought to be through the design review process, and not to go back in front of, and have it as a planning process application. We believe we've met the criteria and will, again, show how we believe we have done so. Compliance with the development agreement, really, when you talk about, you know, and we're going to get into the concept plan shortly, but with the, when you get down to the nitty-gritty of what is a concept plan and what's been approved development agreement, nothing has changed. The number of buildings are still three, that was approved originally, and that's what we're proposing. The number of overall units, including the commercial, live-work, is all the same as what's been, is consistent with what's been approved under the DA. Max building height is all, is the same, 45-foot maximum. Number of park installs is consistent with the approved DA. So those alone, I just, those are planning issues, those are not design issues. And so I want to talk a little bit about the concept plan. This is Exhibit C, which is referenced quite often throughout the development agreement. You know, Exhibit C is basically showing the several phases of the Molinari Park. As you can see, in the northwest end, we have the townhomes, which you've seen come through. We also have some of the mixed-use buildings, which have yet to come through the city process, design review process. And you did earlier look at the hotel site here, so this is what we're talking about, Phase 4. I just want to kind of address the concept plan concept. I don't want to take too much of your time here, but I think it's really important because it is clearly stated how the concept plan represents the owner's current concept for completion of the project. And as the concept plan evolves, and this is from Condition 3.3, "As the concept plan evolves, the city understands and agrees that certain changes in that concept may occur. If the city determines that any such changes require additional public comment due to potential impacts on surrounding property or the community, a public hearing shall be held on any proposed changes in the concept plan. Notice shall be provided as may be required by the city." I'm going to stop right there for a second, and I just want to address when we talk about, you know, who these surrounding properties are, just again, as we get into the changes. The, just for clarification, the surrounding properties are such. The property located to the north, east, and west are all under a common ownership with the apartment parcel and subject to the development agreement. The property located directly to the north of the apartment parcel is a public approximately, a public park, approximately one-acre park. Continuing further north is Plaza Drive, and north of that, the Drainage District. Continuing further north is the Eagle Meadows Family Village Trailer Park. Highway 44 is to the south of the apartment parcel. So when you talk about change to any of the site or any modifications to the concept plan, just want to identify who those neighboring properties are to begin with. But furthermore, what I'd really like to focus in on is that this is a concept plan, and I'm going to go through each of those items that Emily had addressed earlier. Because I think it is important to identify how, this being a concept plan, that it is subject to change. I also do want to, real quickly, I know from the city's ordinance, and it's pretty, well, it's clear enough, I would say, that when you're submitting a concept plan in general, it's, you know, we're identifying, as you can see from Exhibit C, we're identifying the maximum height, we're identifying the general building size and the general building location. And so with all those items, I really want to focus in on these items that the city, or the staff has identified as potential sticking points for even being heard. So I'll come back to that. So just, I'm going to go through the list real quick, if I can. So from a staff report discussion, these will identify the five items that staff has identified. To begin with, to talk about the building location and orientation approved as three U-shaped buildings to limit mass and expansive building fronts, as expressed on Exhibit C. So again, per the development condition 3.3, the concept plan represents the owner's current concept for completion of the project. "As the concept plan evolves, the city understands and agrees that certain changes in that concept may occur." I mean, that is really, really clear. And so the shape and the orientation of the buildings are not site-specific conditions of approval in the development agreement. You know, we're talking about, in general, those buildings are located in the same general vicinity, and there's reasoning behind how that, the design has evolved, which happens. I mean, the concept plan is a concept that's so early in that process, and as we get more information, we start talking with city, you know, building officials, fire officials, the plan evolves from there. I do want to, I do, we have a couple, just a couple graphics, I want to kind of illustrate that very point. This is more or less the massing that was approved under the development agreement, at least from a concept plan, I want to be clear about that. And so that's what we're proposing in terms of that, the general location. So again, if you go back to, you know, general locations, you have northwest, southwest, northeast, and, oops, and that's ours. In general, those areas of building are, I would say, in general, probably within, in terms of the footprint, within 1,000, 2,000 square feet of each other. And that's given, each of those buildings' footprints are neighbor around that 18,000 to 20,000 square feet. So they're very similar in size. That is, that is, there's no mistake about that. And I think you can see in general, those locations of those are very, very similar. However, again, there's no site-specific condition that even addresses that. Item number two is addressing the private road C. Again, I'm not going to repeat the whole, the thought about concept plan. Again, it's a concept plan, but the site layout that was approved was in concept only, and that private road C is allowed parking parallel or 90-degree on either side. And so this is what was originally shown as far as the concept plan, and this is what we're proposing. And so again, it's, there's, the original private road C did have 90-degree parking off of it. We have additional 90-degree parking off of it. In addition, one thing that the original plan didn't have, whether it has no bearing on this or not, but we have now paved, the drive aisles are all paved, whereas the original concept plan only indicated asphalt pavement. And the reason I even bring that up as a side note is from that traffic calming point, which I think is very important in this development. And the other thing to just really note is that that edge, that south edge of Hardscape has not changed. So just reorienting or redirecting private road C very subtly, I mean, maybe 20 feet to the north, such a subtle change had no effect on the landscape berm, no effect on anything going along the south with the landscape and the fence line is. So we just feel that's really a difference without a distinction, or if I have that right. A distinction without a difference, maybe. So, and then, so the third item is the locations of aisle access. And again, the plan, it's concept plan to begin with. So this has evolved, and so we have, you'll see the red points. Those are the two drive aisle locations off of, this is considered, we call this private road E, which runs north-south, and this is private road D, which runs north-south. So those are the general locations of access points off of, off of those roads. And this is what we're proposing. I mean, this in general is in that very same vicinity, this is in the very same vicinity from various reasons, from a fire truck access and other reasonings. This is why we've just added another point. But again, I mean, it's such a similar and a very subtle change that has no bearing on any adjacent properties. I just feel like it's just better designed, but again, it's very similar, which is within, definitely within the realm of a concept plan evolution. The fourth item had to do with the depth of the sidewalk in front of the live-work units. This is on Building C, and I think if you recall what Emily had mentioned about the depth of that, we had initially shown 5 feet, I believe it is. There's two live-work units right here. There is no reason we can't get 10 feet. I feel like we can meet that condition without any issue. So we're just, we agree, we can comply with that, and feel we can put that one to bed. So the fifth item has to do with the parking and parking arrangement and the greenscape. And just to read specifically how that development agreement, site-specific condition 12 reads, it says, "Provided revised preliminary plat, preliminary development plan showing the required covered parking spaces located within the area containing the apartments. The required covered parking spaces shall be covered with greenscape." There's no mention in the site-specific conditions about tuck under parking. It may have been discussed, I, full disclosure, I was not even a part of that process early on. So we picked up the project here more recently. We're not involved in the original development agreement application process, but, you know, we're tied to the site-specific conditions as well as the exhibits. And so when, you know, going back and looking at tuck under parking is just, it's not referenced anywhere in a site-specific condition. And so we, and I want to add to that. We did, as part of our process, our due diligence, which again, as we're getting into the design versus a concept plan, we start to talk to the different folks, fire, building. Reached out to Scott and John over at Eagle Fire, felt it was really important to understand this. I did request a letter from Scott regarding the original layout. He was pretty clear, I think you can see, and I can submit this for the record, but was pretty clear about that they would not approve that plan as was originally proposed. The reason being was the aerial apparatus, or the access to the building, it's because of these covered areas that are just so broad, they can't get to the building, and it's just, it's problematic. So it's just yet another item that, again, kind of helped evolve the plan to where it is today. Having said all that, I'm going to turn the mic over, if I can, to Jim Myhan with South Beckenbaird Landscape, and just to address some of the greenscape items that are tied to this condition, and Jim, if you would.
Jim Myhan, South Beckenbaird, 2002, South Vista Avenue, Boise, Idaho. Mr. Mayor, members of the council. See if I can figure this thing out. So I think, you know, just initially, as Walter talked about, we are proposing porous pavers throughout the drive aisles. But speaking specifically to the conditions that are part of this action tonight, the original concept plan had 65 feet roughly of green roof. And of course, trying to get a fireman to traipse across 65 feet just so he can climb up a building that's on fire, isn't feasible. The new design kind of evolves this into covered carports, and we are proposing a mixture of live plan material with synthetic turf for maintenance and safety issues, because these are smaller areas. And so we believe we are meeting the condition at, the vague condition, which was the greening of the roofs, the carport roofs. So that's what we're looking to do, and then we'll take the remaining and add that to our overall site. There's about 36,000 square feet of green roof, and we believe we can take most of that and put it into the site to the benefit of all the users. The original language of the, of the audio of this meeting was to reduce glare and to reduce heat island effect. And we believe by doing this, we reduce the glare, obviously, and we also, by introducing the live plan material, we're reducing the heat island effect. So we believe that that meets that condition of approval. And then, Councilman Pike, he's got a quick question.
Sorry, Jim, real quick.
Yeah.
Talking about the synthetic grass up on there, what is the temperature variance between live lawn and then the plastic synthetic? It's the heating element, it has to have a factor in there, some difference, right?
Right. Ideally, so to answer that question, when we use synthetic turf, we, if we're using for, say, a sports field, we irrigate it because it is dark, it's plastic, it gets hot. So you do have to keep it cool. So it is not the ideal solution to this. But neither is landscape unless it's irrigated. The burden to that, we think, is to put that into the, into the overall site and getting rid of some of our concrete than it is to put it on the roof where nobody can see it.
Because I'd also think, Jim, real quick, is the load factor on the roofs would be significantly different with dirt, sod, and the water irrigation part of it. But as far as the reflective temperatures that come off synthetic, that's, I don't have the idea, but I would think synthetic would produce more, because of the big football fields, off-gassing of the plastics and the other things that come with it, and then the heat generated from reflection. So I was kind of trying to absorb that in my head of what we're getting at here.
Correct, yeah, Mr. Mayor, Member Pike. It's not as hot as asphalt. The good thing is we're putting all our porous pavers in, which are actually much lighter material. Actually, it's going to have more effect for lowering the heat island effect. The ideal thing with rooftops is to paint them, to paint them white. But the glare factor on that at a one-story level is pretty excessive. So we'd prefer to think outside the box and try to figure out a better solution than all three of these proposals. But right now, this is what we're proposing. Yeah, the load factor to put water on this, and the minimum soil profile for completely planting this is about a four-and-a-half-inch profile, then the plant material, then irrigation, then drainage, and the structural upgrades to all of this.
And then, of course, the maintenance of it.
And the maintenance, and really, our challenge is to put a guy up here, you're putting him on a live wire. You're, he's going to have to have a ladder access, and the safety factor here is ridiculous. And so for us, we just don't even want to deal with it. We'd rather take, really, we'd rather get this to a non-reflective lighter material as best we can on top of the roof, and then put all of the land- as best we can on top of the roof, and then put all of the landscape that's proposed on top of this, which is about 36,000 square feet, and put it into the plazas where it can be used by the residents.
And then, Mr. Mayor, real quick, the last question would be, and I knew I just, it left my head, so forget it. I had a question that was relevant to that, if I can get it real quick, but I'll have to come back, Mr. Mayor, if I can. You, sorry, I just lost my train of thought. Okay, it happens.
So, I think that kind of answers the kind of the fire code issues that we had with the original concept, and why this project evolved the way it did, as well as, I think our total landscape right now is 12.33 percent. It was noted to be 7.5. So, right now, you know, changes to the footprints have already allowed us to exceed city requirements and really produce a really nice product, and I think we're in compliance or above compliance. Yes?
Real quick. Yeah. Jim, I, what was, any other, has there been any other locations that have tried, implemented this type of design with synthetic roofing for parking structures? Okay.
As a quick follow-up, there's only two green roof systems in the state of Idaho, both of them are built by hospitals. We built the largest one, and we now call it a brown roof, because maintenance, they know how to maintain it. So, all of it died. So, St. Owls now has the only remaining green roof, and so, this would be a 20-fold increase in green roofs in the state of Idaho.
Again, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Walt Lindgren, Lindgren Librarian Architecture. Just want to kind of wrap up our presentation here, and just as a summary of the five bullet points. So, just again, to recap, the building location orientation, again, there's no site-specific condition about that shape and orientation of the buildings. We just feel like in general that the buildings are generally located and are of the general size, because they take on a different configuration, is secondary, in our opinion. Again, Private Road C adjustment, the landscape berm and fence along South Highway, excuse me, State Highway 44 is not affected. Again, I would argue it's a distinction without a difference. Private Road Drive Isle location from Private Roads D and E, again, a similar thing, this is from the original concept plan, it was a concept plan that these, over the evolution of this development, we essentially added an additional access point. The other two are more or less the same as what they were originally. And so, I think it's just for greater continuity, greater fire truck access, it just makes great sense to us. The 10-foot sidewalk in front of the live work units, we have no issue with that, I think we've shown from the graphic that we can comply with that. And then, again, I think Mr. Mayen has kind of explained our approach to the green space, or excuse me, the green scape above the roof, parking structures. Again, tuck-under is not addressed in a site-specific condition, so just not how to address that. With that, I really appreciate your time, there's a lot, there was a lot to chew on, and we really appreciate the opportunity for your consideration and how to stand for questions. Thank you.
Okay, any questions?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Councilman Vaughn.
Walt, can you go to the very beginning of this? You actually had a pretty good slide relative to, here's our two options moving forward. Keep going down.
Councilmember Vaughn.
Slide eight, slide eight, I believe.
Oh, is it eight?
Yep. Yep, that's it.
Okay.
So, I just wanted to end, Bill or, is Emily, oh, she's heading back there. This is basically kind of the equivalent of what we're looking at here is, if we agree with it, it goes forward, it's still going to go through the entire design review process and everything, and if we decide that we don't agree with it, it's going to go basically through the entire design, or it comes through another hearing, correct?
Generally speaking, correct.
Okay. That was Bill Vaughn saying yes, generally speaking, yes, correct. All right, thanks, I just, I kind of want to, we can, there's a whole bunch of questions and stuff related to design review and all that fun stuff, but really, just kind of went down to what our two choices are for this.
Okay, any other questions for the applicant? No? All right, thank you, sir, appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
All right, any questions for staff? Or discussion, or motion?
Question for staff? All right, what, you're going to jump in there?
Mr. Mayor and Councilmember Vaughn, I'll wait for the question, probably be a question for the administrator, but I want to provide a point of clarification as well to what's been presented to you tonight.
Okay. Biggest question was, I guess from my perspective, it comes down to, in the development agreement, there was the concept only, not a lot of very specific requirements, and that's kind of, I guess, what we're talking about is, difference here is like, well, this was conceptual in nature, and as such, we can make whatever adjustments we want, and we're still okay. As opposed to, eh, we've, it looks like it's changed quite a bit. That's kind of where I'm going with this one, is how much, because I, just looking at it, the first presentation is, it's changed quite a bit. I'll let you talk.
Mr. Mayor and Councilmember Vaughn, you've touched on that, and that's the direction we're requesting, that's what Bill touched on. We're not the city, you, you're the city, you make that final decision. If you make the determination that it's not in conformance with the concept plan, then you provide that direction. But if you feel that it hasn't deviated enough, and you're comfortable with moving it forward with the, what they're presenting, give us that direction. But I do want to add one thing to this that has not been discussed. Mr. Lindgren touched several times on the fact that there is items that weren't conditioned as part of the site-specific conditions of approval. Well, absolutely not, they weren't conditioned. But what we have to remember here, when this came through the hearing process, it was approved as a rezone that gave us the development agreement, a conditional use permit, a planned unit development, and a preliminary plat. Part of a preliminary development plan will show the layout of the buildings, along with the preliminary plat. It's not just the lines in the sand on how these lots are going to be shaped, it's the layout of the buildings. When Mr. Vaughn, when, was working through this, working with the applicant's representative, and that's why they're emailed, and he directed them, based on the interpretation of the administrator, you need to come back forward with a modification to that preliminary development plan and the development agreement, because the concept plans, they are deviating slightly from the concept plan. But we need to remember, when this was approved, it was not only approved as a rezone, it was approved as a conditional use permit, preliminary development plan, preliminary plat. And that preliminary development plan, preliminary plat dates down by the city on September 18th, excuse me, September of 11th of 2018, and believe me, I lived through all this, we went through reconsideration, it came back before the council showed the location of every building. And not only did it show the location of every building, but the council, in addition to what they're proposing for the live work units, actually required them to put in three more live work units, and those were adjacent to the street. And that's why it's so important here, when the administrator reviewed this and responded, is the deviation, what was that going to do to the additional live work units, because they are no longer adjacent to the street? So, we need to keep that in our mind. No, they weren't site-specific conditions, but yes, the council approved a preliminary development plan, preliminary plat, showing the locations of those buildings where they were, not where they're being proposed. And with that, I'll stand for questions.
So, Mr. Mayor, if I may.
Councilman Pike.
So, Mike, what I'm gathering here is, I could support the determination that the proposed changes will require a public hearing then, right?
Correct.
For a development agreement or a PUD modification. So, the council may accept the public comment is the, on the changes to evaluate the potential impacts that surround the property, the surrounding properties and the community. Is that kind of in the realm of what we can do?
If you feel what's being proposed is in substantial conformance with what was originally approved, give us that direction, then we can move forward. Correct?
Okay. Any other questions for staff? No? All right. Discussion? Motion?
Discussion, Mr. Mayor.
Yep. Councilmember Gindelsberger.
I just wanted to address, like Councilman Pike had said, I don't feel these are minor changes in nature at all. This is quite a development change, and I believe that it does require for the public to have their input on this process. Not only are the immediate neighbors affected by that, but the entire community is as well. So, I don't think it's fair to say that just the surrounding area is affected by it, and may or may not be, you know, in approval of this. So, I would like to discuss with the council on the denial of this request.
Okay. Anything else?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Vaughn.
In general, like, well, one, I think what they've shown, looks nice. Again, I'm not a design review, looks nice. But it's still, that's why I kind of went again, down to is the base question is, is the application in substantial or not in substantial compliance with the development agreement? And I'm going to go on the side that, based on what was shown originally versus what's kind of proposed, quite honestly, I like what's proposed better, but I don't think it's in substantial conformance with the development agreement that was identified previously. So, I don't know if that would be a denial, or if that was just a stating that it's not in substantial conformance and needs to go through a modification.
Okay, is that a question?
That's a question for staff.
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Vaughn, would you, I'm listening, but I'm also formulating a thought, would you please restate your question?
So, basically, this one is, is this more of a approval-denial, or is this one basically just stating whether or not we feel that this is in conformance or nonconformance with the development agreement? And if it's in nonconformance, we need to go through a modification process.
Thank you, I think I can answer that. This is a designer view application that's made its way to you. Your recommendation from staff has been that it is not in compliance with the development agreement, condition of approval number 3.3, which states that the, I'll just read it again, "The current concept plan represents the owner's current concept for completion of the project. As the concept plan evolves, the city understands and agrees that certain changes in that concept may occur. If the city determines that any such changes require additional public comment due to potential impacts on surrounding property or the community, a public hearing shall be held on any proposed changes in the concept plan. Notice shall be provided as may be required by the city." So, the determination, so this is a designer view application. If you think that you need to hold a hearing on the concept plan to evaluate these changes through a public hearing process, your course of action would be to deny the concept, or pardon me, to deny the designer view application, and direct the applicant to, and you would state something along the lines of, if you want to proceed with this design, if this is the way you feel, then you need to first seek a modification to your fundamental land use planning applications, which was a rezone with development agreement, conditional use permit, preliminary and preliminary development plan. There's conditions in all of those that would need to be modified through a public hearing process, that would then give you the ability to act on it, however you determine that. But that's the process that's being recommended to you to follow, to consider a site plan that's been presented to you with this designer view application.
Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Councilman Vaughn.
Bill, can you go a little bit rereading, you said specifically, one of the conditions there is it adversely affects the adjacent. What was that exact part?
It says, "The city understands and agrees that certain changes in the concept plan may occur, period. If the city determines that any such changes require additional public comment due to potential impacts on surrounding property or the community, a public hearing shall be held on any proposed changes."
Okay, so basically, that's what we're determining whether or not it's going to substantially affect the surrounding community, or, sorry, the surrounding landowners and/or community. That's really what it comes down to.
Correct.
Okay, thanks.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor.
Yep.
I have a question for you, Bill, please. In addition to the questions that have been asked of you so far, there's some staff review comments regarding additional items that do not comply with Eagle City Code on page, I believe it's 27. They go into the number of required parking spaces for the apartments, bicycle racks that aren't proposed, interior landscape percentage, and so on. So, are those things that need to be considered as well?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Russell, those are items that were not identified as fundamental to the concept plan, and that those items, while important to a designer view application, could be resolved through site planning of the designer view application and/or conditions of approval of the designer view application. So, those are not as fundamental as the five items that Emily presented.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any more questions for staff? Okay. Thoughts, motion?
Mr. Mayor, if I may.
Would you guys like to hear from?
I'll be brief.
Lindgren in?
Sure. Because this isn't a public hearing, so.
Okay, go ahead. Again, Walt Lindgren, Lindgren Librarian Architecture. So, just to address Councilmember Russell's comment, we have addressed those site-specific conditions, it just feels secondary to this discussion. So, in terms of the conditions, there's always conditions on a designer view application, we have already addressed those, just to that point. I guess what, I would, parting here, what I would like to ask the council is to, as I mentioned in this, this is a perfect page to have up, is that we do request clarification of the specific items that we're not in compliance with. I think that would be really important moving forward for us to understand, and so that we can move this project forward. Appreciate that, thank you.
Yep. All right, any more discussion? Thought? Motion?
Sorry, brains.
Does anybody else have any thoughts?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Councilmember Gindelsberger.
We'll go ahead and make a motion, and Bill, if you could help me clarify your statement on 11A, action item DR-1922, three-apartment buildings, including a thousand-square-foot retail and common area landscaping within Molinari Park subdivision, to deny that action item, and specifying what Mr. Vaughn had stated in regards to proceeding with this design, and if you could clarify your statement as to how you presented that.
Will do. Can we just bring your presentation up? Mr. Mayor, and members of the council, the items that were presented by staff with regard to the, in answering the question that the applicant requested, which is, identify the items that you believe need to be, I'm paraphrasing here, this is not how it was stated on the slide, but identify what items you believe need to be included in a public hearing as it relates to a development agreement modification and PUD slash CUP modification. And they are the items that we've addressed in the presentation, talking about the layout of the buildings, the way the parking is identified, or, the way the parking structures are, I don't know if I should paraphrase, or if you should refer to this exhibit. The parking concept, through the original development process, had parking that was included as part of a concept designed to the buildings, and tuck-under parking, with green roofs on top, with live landscaping, both to soften the look of the, from the residences looking down, but also to include more common area open space on the site, because the numbers didn't compute at the time, so they justified that there would be an additional way to get landscaping in on those roofs. So, if you're going to remove that as a requirement, that's an important component to have as part of your public hearing process. The location of Private Road C, Emily had identified. So, basically, the roadway configuration throughout the development will be important to denote on a, on a modification request, so that it, to take into account these changes. In this exhibit, you can see the location of the buildings that were approved on the concept plan, and the location of the buildings shown on the designer view plan. I believe your deliberation this evening, and also as you're making this motion, I feel I understand clearly that you, you're acknowledging that these are different, and that a site plan slash concept plan that would be given to you for consideration as part of a public hearing, they will be identifying all the items that you've discussed this evening, and those will be combined into a packet given to you during a hearing process, which at that point, you would be eligible to make a determination on the acceptance of those into that new land use planning application. of those into that new land use planning application. Back to the original. The, the, basically fixing the concept plan, showing the location of the drive aisles to be consistent with what was, what was developed in the approved landscape plan versus, I hope I'm getting that correctly. I'm pointing to the bullet that says, "The approved concept plan and overall common areas show the drive aisle locations into the multifamily development adjacent to private roads D and E in one location in the site." And the site plan, dates set by the city on March 10th, 2022, shows the drive aisles into the multifamily in, in a different location. So making sure that the drive aisles are reflected in that, in the news and middle.
So basically, in the motion, can we just say to?
As stated by Bill Vaughn.
What is not in compliance, a special concern?
It was on special, issues of special concern.
Mr. Mayor, maybe, and Councilman Ginsburg, maybe just a friendly suggestion for the motion then. I believe, based on the, the action that's being, that's in front of the city council, the, the threshold question is whether or not this application is in substantial conformance with the DA or not. If, if the motion is to find that the present application is nonsubstantial conformance with the DA for the reasons set forth in slide number six, that would be sufficient for a motion, I believe, that maybe someone could second, and they have a discussion on.
Okay.
Shall I make my motion again, or reference what?
Just reference what?
I will reference what Victor had stated as my motion.
So you want to add slide six?
And adding slide six.
Okay, this is gonna get you.
I know.
So there's a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, discussion, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Councilman Vaughn.
So just, I guess, going through, so, like, I'm gonna restate, like, I believe the plan that was submitted tonight is better than the original one that was. I like all the components. But I think it still goes back to the one thing, is it substantially compliant with the one that was submitted earlier? I don't believe it's substantially the same. It's better. It's got more specificity. But the other one is relative to the community and adjacent landowners. I don't, I mean, I don't think it actually adversely affects any adjacent landowners or the community. So with that said, I'm gonna go back to the same thing. It's not in substantial conformance.
Okay. Any other discussion? No? Okay. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, motion carries. All right, we'll move on to item B, 11B, action item noncompliance of conditions of approval associated with preliminary plat extension of time for Stillwater subdivision, Stillwater Development Partners LLC, Corey Eltharp. You should probably go first, so we, we know what's, what's the issue.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Mike Williams, Plains Union Staff. As part of the history of the Stillwater site, there was a preliminary plat that was approved, I believe, back in 2015. It was quite some time ago. And there's been two extensions of time associated with the preliminary plat. The first phase of development's been constructed, and then there's second phase of development, and the applicants had requested a preliminary plat extension of time because they were working on the second phase of the development. Because if they don't submit the second phase within a year of the plat being recorded for the first phase, the preliminary plat expires. So they, that's, they subsequently requested that preliminary plat extension of time. They requested a second extension of time, and that was granted as well. And then they came back and added, asked for a modification to that extension of time. And as part of that modification, there were conditions of approval that was placed on the modification. Typically, they address five or six items, and if they can address all those items, the council typically will grant extension of time. But because they're coming back modification, asking for additional time, the council put three conditions on that extension of time. In August 10th, 2021, and it's the second page of the, in your packet, and these are the three conditions. And they stated, "All weeds shall be abated in accordance with Eagle City Code Section 4-1 on or before September 9th of 2021." Number two is, "The applicant shall submit a site grading plan to the city of Eagle on or before November 8th of 2021. And landscaping and sidewalk required pursuant to designer review application number DR-11-16 located adjacent State Highway 44 shall be completed on or before May 1st of 2022." Now, we've gone through a fall and a spring, and we know things are already starting to grow. So I, I can't stand here and tell you whether or not the weeds were actually abated by September 9th of 2021. They may have been. What I can tell you is the applicant has not submitted a site grading plan to the city before November 8th of 2021. And I can also tell you that the landscaping sidewalk required pursuant to that design review that's located adjacent to State Highway 44 has not been completed. The city holds assurity for the completion of that, but was up to the applicant, and he stated he would have that completed prior to that May 1st date. Now, even though that sidewalk landscaping is in front of Phase Two, it was required as part of the approval of Phase One to complete it, because what it was providing was that interconnectivity of the 10-foot wide pathway that runs along State Highway 44. One of the council members requested that we work with the mayor to get this on your agenda at your last meeting. However, staff recommended that we wait until this meeting to allow for that last expiration date associated with the landscaping sidewalk adjacent 44, to see if they start working on it or if it were to be completed. I will also tell you that a final plat was, application was submitted a year ago for Phase Two, and they submitted it in time. However, staff has worked with the applicant and the applicant's engineer, and, and it's been, we've requested more than a year ago, and nothing has been submitted, any revised information or anything. So it's just sitting in limbo. And with that, staff would stand for questions.
Any questions for staff at this point?
Mr. Mayor?
Yep, Councilman Vaughn?
So, like, moving forward, what are our, our options relative to permits? What, guess, what are our options moving forward?
I'm looking to see when. I'm not seeing a date that's associated with the expiration of the plant, I mean, plat. One of the options was, if you, if the preliminary plat expires, in order to plat that in the future, they will have to start from square one. However, the landscaping that's adjacent State Highway 44 was a condition of approval of the first phase of this development. And Victor may need to weigh in on this. Since it was a condition of the first phase, there may be a possibility to hold billing permits for the remaining lots within that phase of the unsold lots within the phase. That, that might be an option to do a stop, I don't know whether stop work or just quit issuing billing permits until that is completed.
Okay. Any other questions for staff? No?
Mr. Mayor, just to follow up. So just the two. So we have, one, just get rid of the preliminary plat, I guess, would, basically go through the process again for the entire thing, which I don't think we want to do that. But, well, don't know. Anyway. So prelim, relative preliminary plat, and the other one is hold building permits until substantially complete or all complete. Those are kind of our two options.
Mr. Mayor and Councilmember Vaughn, I would look at it as, I mean, number one, they did submit a final plat application, and that hopefully Corey can address where they are with that. Either that or direct him to address the staff concerns so he can bring it back in front of you. But at a minimum, I'd recommend stopping the building permits in Phase One until that is, until the landscaping and sidewalk are required to State Highway 44, or direct staff to move on his letter of credit, and then the city will be tasked with constructing the sidewalk and finishing the landscaping.
Right. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions for staff? No. All right. Mr. Eltharp?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, councilmembers. Corey Eltharp with Stillwater Development, 98 Carbon Rivet Ave. As far as the, the conditions for our last extension, we, we did submit a grading plan via email. Maybe that wasn't the appropriate way to submit it. But, long story short, is we had a grading contractor, agreed to start work in February, got delayed, continued to get delayed. They were gonna do the master grading of Phase Two to elevate. Basically, the roadway makes a significant drop off, and then it's fairly flat, and the site needs to get graded at a slope so we can get that sidewalk in there. He kind of dragged us, dragged us along for a little bit. We tried to replace him, to no avail because everyone was too busy. We have decided, even though we'd rather be building houses, we decided to perform the grading ourselves. We mobilized equipment there this week. I have a construction schedule showing us completing that work by June 16th, which I can submit to you. I have a letter from our lender, basically showing us that we have the funds to do it. I even brought you a picture of one of the loaders that was, that was delivered and started moving some dirt today. It was not our intent to not hit the date. It's, it's just interesting times right now with getting work done, especially grading work in the spring is, if you have one guy who fails you, nobody else has any time in their schedule because they're already scheduled out. So I request, I guess, another extension till, till June 16th, to have that work complete. And, and we're actively working on it now.
Okay. Any questions for Mr. Eltharp?
Just a couple, Mr. Mayor. Corey, I think I was the one that helped extend your extension last time with the understanding, the, the part that, the, the three conditions that we, you got a letter from, the, the weed, the weed issue, the maintenance of the weeds, I mean, there was, I, I kind of thought you were probably able to take care of that, you know, expedite that problem, and what happened with that, that?
We, we, we mowed all the, that next week. All the weeds were mowed and everything was treated right immediately after that.
Right now, it looks like gra, I mean, there's, there's, I mean, it's, because it's, things are growing, I mean, right now. So it's not.
Completely understand that. The, the intent, though, is to be grading lots, not mowing weeds, and, and.
Yeah.
Our contractor let us down. So, like I said, at this point, if I, mowing and treating weeds would be counterproductive, considering we have equipment out there to now start grading the entire site.
Right. So, and the other two points, the submitting of the grading thing you just explained.
We did submit a grading plan. I can forward the, the.
Did we receive that? You said it was via email or something? Did we?
It was, it was submitted via email. I can re-forward it. I mean, I can look it up on my phone if you want, but.
I mean, I just wondered if staff received that.
And, and it was done in, within the timeframe that was required?
Are we just, we have, need a few minutes to look for, see if it got submitted?
Well, we can let Corey finish, and any other questions, and then go to staff after that.
Okay.
So, Mr. Mayor?
Councilman Vaughn?
On that one. So, Mr. Eltharp on that one. So we have, yeah, I know, the weeds were mowed. Grading plan was, regardless of submitted, but the sidewalk and everything like that being the May 1st, 2022. I guess, relative to the extensions so far, the first one we did was for COVID. We knew all that was going on. And then the second one was for the engineering firm, the, I think it was TO at the time.
KM.
Or, oh, KM, sorry, that was, KM at the time, and issues with that one. I guess my only thing is with that one is there's, I mean, there's several developments that were started significantly after you guys that have, you know, Bald Eagle Point is one right down the street.
Sure.
They put all of their, it's all in. I would, I guess, mine would be, you know, in asking you with the two, in all reality, we have the two that are, is hold building permits until subsequent, you know, I'd say substantially complete or moving towards it. Or the other one is use a letter of credit to have the city move forward. In your opinion, I'm assuming the easiest one is to, if we're to do, hold permits until such time, if it's June 16th, that's pretty quick. I guess, I'd almost go strike one, strike two. You know, this is the third time we've really tried. I think we've bent over backwards. As, this time is, do we kick it down the road again? I think that was one of the things we were doing beforehand, is trying to hold developers a lot more responsible to timeframes. We know things happen. I would be, at this point, I would, I would move towards basically holding permits until such time. And I seen with that one is, that's totally in your hands. If you're done by June 16th, then, then you guys can hit the road running on that one. But I guess at this point, we have to do something to make sure that that gets done, because that's a, it's downtown Eagle, it's right there, and it's been there for a long time. So, well, I guess, what would your, if, with the two, getting your input with the permits versus pulling the letter of credit, if you had a choice between the two?
I think it's obvious, but.
Okay, that's, I'm assuming, but, oh, hell, I don't know.
I thi, I think defining, you know, defining substantial completion or, or what, what that means. I mean, if in, in 30 days I have, it's 95 percent. Like, a good example is there's, there's some signage that still has to go up, you know, whether or not all the panels are gonna be installed at that time, you know, things like that, by June 16th. I, but that's, I don't think that's critical to the pathway and the landscaping.
No, I think, yeah, I, I, Mr. Mayor.
Mm-hmm.
Sorry. No, I think I would to, totally agree. I think as long as we get similar to like last year, when we do that, it's like, the weeds were mowed within a week. I saw that. This one is, we have a berm, we have a sidewalk, we have all that, and the planting and vegetation is starting to go. At that point, we can re-initiate. I think that would be, for me, substantial completion, or at least moving towards it, with the intent that, again, it doesn't just stay as a dirt berm. And, you know, I think the landscaping's in place and the sidewalk's in place, or at least the forms are in place. So we can actually show, yes, in fact, they are moving towards what they're supposed to do at that point, reissue permits.
And so what would be the trigger to release or to open us back up for pulling permits? Is it a, another hearing? Is it a, you know, what's?
I'll go to staff on that one. Bill, what's the normal, if we're to do reinstate, if they're to just come back at such time, they can say, hey, we're showing substantial, we're substantially complete with this, and this is why?
We're, we're, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, we're, we're in a little bit of uncharted territory as it relates to this proceeding. And so you asked the question, what's normal? This, this is a new normal. So.
Yeah, okay.
What I would think would be appropriate is, is when that date comes, Corey gives us a call, we go out, we take pictures, we converse out on the site, get a good, a good, get a good take on what it is. We come back, we give the mayor an update on what that looks like. The mayor has the authority to administratively say, staff, yes, we're moving in the right direction, keep things moving forward. And then he does a report to you at the next meeting and says, we're, we're moving forward. If the mayor felt that it was not moving forward in accordance with his expectations, based upon your input and expectations, we would come back and agendaize it like tonight and have another meeting at that time.
Good. Mr. Mayor, would that be okay? It kind of puts the auspice on you, if you're okay with that, and I'd be willing to do that, or I'd be okay with that.
Yep. I think substantial completion, you know, obviously it's relative, but I think we can figure out what that means. And then also the fact that there is equipment on-site now. Dirt is being able to be moved. I might want to see, just not to push it to July 1st date, and, you know, hey, we're, you know, we can do it before that if you've got stuff done, but you've got till July 1st to get this stuff going and moving, and you've got equipment out there. And my understanding is you're doing it yourself rather than waiting on somebody else. So.
So, on that one, make, or, and Bill would have to make a motion for this one, basically, to say suspend building permits until such time that the mayor identifies a substant, making substantial progress towards the requirements?
One, one thing you have to consider is if there's any permitting required for the, like, signage, that you don't hold me up on those for the enhancement, right? For the, you follow what I'm saying?
Yeah.
Okay. Just want to make sure that's in the condition that I don't go to pick up a permit to complete what you want me to complete and can't get it.
Mr. Mayor, I think you gotta, so, Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion. Well, then we can do discussion. I'm off my sheet now. I'm off my sheet now. Just make a, make a motion on 11C, or sorry, 11B, non-compliance conditional approval, that, a motion to suspend permits for Phase 1 until such time that the mayor has identified that they are making progress towards substantial completion of the requirements. At such time, the mayor can deem permits to be reinitiated.
Okay, there's motions or a second?
Second.
Motion second? Any discussion? Do we want to put a July 1st as, not to, not to exceed July 1st to that, or you just want to keep it the way you have it?
Mr. Mayor, actually, for discussion purposes, like, for that one, it would be if they can get it done before then, but just the permits are suspended until such time they meet that requirement. So if it's.
Okay.
It's in the applicant's best interest to get it done quicker than.
All right.
So.
Just want to make sure.
Okay.
All right. Any more discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, motion carries. All right, we'll move on to item C, action item ordinance 873, annexation or rezone.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Mike Williams, Plains Zoning Staff. And although I didn't work on this application, Morgan asked me to cover this for, this is for an annexation rezone of the property that was approved as part of the Amberly subdivision located on Beacon Light Road.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Vaughn.
I move pursuant to Idaho Code 50-902, the rule requiring ordinances be read on three different days with one reading to be full, or be in full and dispensed with. The ordinance number 873 be considered after being read only once by title.
Go to the second now. One more.
Is there a second?
Second.
Just real quick, I said the Amberly Ranch, it's that subdivision and also the adjacent property that's, that's the corner of Ballantyne and Beacon Light that wasn't part of the subdivision.
Any more discussion? All right, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Motion carries.
Mr. Mayor.
Vaughn?
I move that ordinance number 873 be adopted. An ordinance annexing certain real property and situated in the uncorporated area of Ada County, Idaho, in contiguous with the corporate limits of City of Eagle to the City of Eagle, Idaho, changing the zoning classification for said real property described herein from RUT, rural urban transition, to REDA residential estates with a development agreement, amending the zoning map of the City of Eagle to reflect said change, directing the copies of the ordinance to be filed and proved by law, and providing a severability clause and providing an effective date.
All right. There's motions or a second?
Second.
Moved a second. Any more discussion? Roll call?
Aye.
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 All right, we'll move on to public comment two. The Eagle City Council is taking both in-person and remote public comment via WebEx, meaning login instructions are posted on the website. If you just want to watch the meeting without giving consent or comment, please watch our live stream at the website. This time is reserved for the public to address our elected officials regarding concerns or comments they would like to provide to the city council regarding any matter up to and including any subject on the agenda with the exception of public hearing and land use items. Comments regarding public hearing and land used items need to be made during the open public hearing for said items in accordance with Idaho Code. At times, the city council may see comments, opinions regarding specific city matters excluding public hearing and land used items. During this allotted time, out of courtesy for all those who wish to speak, the city council requests each speaker limit their comments to three minutes. Is there anyone that would like to make a public comment? No? All right, seeing none. We'll move on to executive session. Executive session 74-206, parentheses one.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Pike.
Okay, thank you. I move that we go into executive session 74-206, one, with letters C and F to require interest in real property which is not owned by the public agency and to communicate with legal counsel for public agency to discuss legal ramifications of illegal options for pending litigation for controversies not yet being litigated for, but immediately likely to be litigated. The mere presence of legal counsel extension, executive session does not satisfy this requirement.
All right, there's a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Moved a seconded. Roll, any discussion? Roll call?
Aye.
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 All right, we're back from executive session. And item A, action item, action regarding acquisition of real property at 8600 West Equest Lane, Eagle, Idaho. Is there a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion.
Councilmember Russell.
I'd like to authorize the mayor to execute the purchase and acquisition of real property at 8600 West Equest Lane, Eagle, in the amount of $1,975,000.
All right, there's a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Moved a second. Any more discussion? All of us, roll, roll call.
Aye.
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 All right, item 13B, action item regarding pending or threatened litigation. Is there any motions? All right, seeing none. Item 14, adjournment. Is there a motion to adjourn? Is there a second?
Second.
Moved a second. Any more discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.